Board members, please come to the table.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I know, right? Nominally. That's right. to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by Elijah King, Cappy's winner for Best Lead Actor in a Musical for his performance in Fairfax High School's production of The Wedding Singer.
last gleaming Whose broad stripes and bright stars Through the perilous fight Were the ramparts we watched Were so gallantly streaming And the rockets' red glare The bombs bursting through air Gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave For the land of the free And the home of the brave?
Beautiful voice. Thank you, Elijah. That was really lovely. Item 2.02, in order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on July 14, 2016, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Mrs. Strauss, seconded by Ms. Corbett-Sanders. All those in favor, please raise your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item 2.03, announcements. Ms. Darinath Kofax will not be with us this evening. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Please turn off or silence your cell phone. Tonight, we welcome our newest member to the dais, Ms. Laura Chu. Laura is our student representative for the 2016-2017 school year. She's a rising senior at Thomas Jefferson High School, and we will hear from Laura a little bit later in the meeting. Welcome, Laura. Item 2.04, we have an important recognition tonight, a resolution honoring Debbie Kilpatrick. I call on Mrs. Strauss.
First, Ms. Kilpatrick, if you would like to come up to the podium so that we can speak to you directly, I'll wait for Debbie to get up here. Debbie is a very, very special person in Fairfax County. I am very pleased to offer this resolution honoring Debbie Kilpatrick. I first met Debbie when she was the PTSA president at Thomas Jefferson, and from there she went on to so many more jobs and offices. I commend Debbie for her tireless leadership in helping parents to be strong leaders and partners in their children's schools. Debbie believes and indeed demonstrates the critical impact on the quality of our children's education when parents, teachers, and community members join our PTAs and work together to provide the best education possible for all our children. Debbie, you've been a strong and wise leader and a treasure to Fairfax County Public Schools. So with great pleasure, I offer this resolution. Whereas Debbie Kilpatrick has served as the president of the Fairfax County Council of PTAs from 2014 through 2016, and whereas Ms. Kilpatrick has engaged with various stakeholders, including Dr. Garza, school board members, and the Board of Supervisors and Legislators to apprise parent-teacher associations about the need for increased FCPS funding, she attended community meetings, participated in community discussion around the challenges facing the school district, and testified before governing bodies in support of local PTAs and families. Ms. Kilpatrick also attended the Virginia PTA Put Kids First Rally in Richmond and served as a partner for the Invest in Kids Rally in support of school and county funding. And whereas believing that community service should be recognized, she nominated the Fairfax County Council of PTAs for the Outstanding Community Partner Award, Volunteer Service Award, and National PTA Diversity Award. At Ms. Kilpatrick's nomination, Dr. Garza was awarded the 2016 Virginia PTA Power Partner Award. And whereas her passion for education advocacy has been recognized, Ms. Kilpatrick has received the 2015 Fairfax NAACP Community Service Award, Fairfax County Federation of Teachers President's Award, Virginia PTA Life Membership Award, and the Virginia PTA President's Honor Award. And whereas Ms. Kilpatrick, a proud parent of two FCPS graduates, has served as the PTSA president at Thomas Jefferson and Centerville High Schools, and as a dedicated substitute teacher for Fairfax County Public Schools since 2000. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board extends its highest commendation and appreciation to Debbie Kilpatrick for her dedicated service and inspirational leadership to the students, teachers, administrators, and communities of Fairfax County Public Schools. I so move.
Seconded by Mr. Moon. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Congratulations. And at this time, I would like to invite the family and friends of Mrs. Kilpatrick Item 2.05, we have another recognition tonight, a resolution honoring Dr. Jerry Gordon. I call on Mr. McElmey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So can I ask Jerry to come on, come on down? Thank you. So on behalf of the Board, Jerry, we want to thank you for all your support over the years, and particularly for not only your support now, you can continue over there so you aren't in the middle of everything, and also for your continuing support of our schools. You've truly been, as the head of the Economic Development Authority, a true advocate for us, and we truly appreciate that. And we know that this, the fact that you will be stepping down from the Foundation chairmanship leaves you a little more time, and we know that you will be using that time to indulge others in your stand-up comedy, and also, we hope you'll have a little more time on the golf course and to root for the Yankees. So with that, this is the resolution honoring you. Whereas Dr. Gerald L. Gordon served as Chair of the Board of the Foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools from 2013 through 2016, and whereas he is the president and chief executive officer of the Fairfax County Economic Development Authority, one of the largest office markets in the nation, Dr. Gordon has consulted with city and state governments nationally and internationally, and has been instrumental in attracting many companies to Fairfax County. And whereas Dr. Gordon is an author of 12 books on strategic planning and economic development, and has continued to be an educator, having taught at Catholic University, the University of Maryland, George Mason University, and Virginia Commonwealth University. And whereas he is the recipient of numerous awards and recognitions, including the 2010 Virginia Business Person of the Year, the 2010 James Rees Award, the 2011 Northern Virginia Regional Leadership Award, and the 2012 Trend Lines Trend Setter of the Year for the Washington Metropolitan Area. Virginia Business Magazine has recognized Dr. Gordon as among the 50 most influential Virginians for the past four years. And whereas during his tenure with the Foundation for Fairfax County Public Schools, he has ushered in a period of great transition, beginning with the Foundation's relocation from the Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce. He has recruited prominent business executives from the private sector to serve on the Foundation's Board. Under his leadership, the Foundation has raised over $1.5 million for programs within Fairfax County Public Schools, such as the FCPS Honors, Cyber Patriot, Great Beginnings, Genesis Works, and Kids in Need. And whereas Dr. Gordon is a true friend and ardent supporter of Fairfax County Public Schools, now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board acknowledges with gratitude the contributions, unwavering support, and inspirational leadership of Dr. Gerald Gordon. Now at this time, yes, right, so, I so move.
And is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Corbett-Sanders. All those in favor? That is unanimous.
Okay, and now at this time, I would like to invite you, your family, and friends to join us at the dais for a photo. Thank you.
Item 3.01, citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. Speakers should refrain from using personally identifiable information in connection with an individual student. Speakers are expected to deliver their comments with the decorum and respect appropriate to the conduct of the public's business, and during public comment, those in the audience may stand to show support. However, for safety and out of respect for your fellow citizens, please remain seated during the rest of tonight's meeting. Loud conversation or outbursts are disruptive, and the Chair will restore order if necessary. Thank you for your cooperation, and thanks very much to those who have come to speak to us tonight. We have 10 citizens signed up to address the Board, and then we also have five video testimonies. Our first speaker is George Basera, to be followed by Robert Rigby. Mr. Basera? Okay, sorry. Robert Rigby, to be followed by Matt Levi.
My name is Robert Rigby. I've been teaching in Fairfax County since 1999, but gained my career working with students in 1983. I will speak about the local plan for the gifted, and then share my thoughts on the discussion around gender identity. FCPS has one of the most developed and successful programs for gifted learners in the country, recognizing that different students have different needs, and serving thousands of these students. Success for all students can be increased by focusing instruction on students' attitudes towards their own learning. Children who perceive themselves as being able to grow and learn can do so in remarkable ways, whether they are labeled as academically talented or not. Best practices for educating gifted and talented students are also best practices for teaching all students. We have only limited ways in which we evaluate students for expanded programs. In fact, students show their talents in different ways, and we need to allow for those varied demonstrations of talent, whether it be holistic evaluations, portfolios, or other ways. Standardized tests are not the only means for evaluating student talent. Now for a pivot to a different topic. By and large, I and the coalition of which I am a part, support the regulations about transgender and gender nonconforming students. Input from the community is still possible. Our coalition will continue to write and email Dr. Garza about our thoughts and reactions to the regulations in the upcoming months and years. Others should do so also. If aspects of the regulations don't work, they will be altered, I'm sure. I am concerned about the tone of the public discourse around this matter. In light of the recent tragedy in Orlando, it is important that any hateful rhetoric be dialed down. I encourage people on both sides of the issue to be polite and civil, and to accept that people may reasonably disagree with them. Many trans people and their allies have been addressed with animosity, particularly on the June 9th and June 30th meeting, both in this room and via electronic media. The consequence of this is that public speech is discouraged. We cannot have a public discussion on these topics if some people are scared into silence. One cannot ask for more public input and at the same time attack those with whom one disagrees. I call upon our public leaders to use their influence in reducing inflammatory language and to allow for differences in thoughts and reactions. Some members of my community have also asked me to emphasize that it is crucial for Board members to stay engaged and present for all comments in the entire meeting. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Matt Levi, to be followed by Kate Walter.
Hello, Board. I'm here tonight to ask you to vote to rename Jeb Stuart High School. My name's Matt Levy. I've worked for Fairfax County Public Schools for 14 years, the last 11 years at Jeb Stuart High School. I currently teach world history, psychology, and sociology. I also sponsor the Impact Club, which is dedicated to social justice, and the club members in large part stand behind the name of, changing the name of Jeb Stuart High School. During my tenure at Jeb Stuart, I've worked with four principals, over 500 staff, and thousands of students. I worked at Stuart when we had the MetLife Principal of the Year in 2005. I worked at Stuart when we welcomed back a successful football program in 2009, and I joined the community in celebrating the appointment of our current principal, Penny Gross. I have never during my tenure been prouder to be a member of the Stuart faculty than I am today, and that's because of the work carried out by the Students for Change, namely Marlee Finley, Anna Rowan, and Lydia Annual. I watched these girls seize a moment of national reflection brought on by the brutal murder of nine black parishioners in Charleston and subsequent lowering of the Confederate flag at the South Carolina Capitol grounds. The Students for Change asked themselves, what can we do to affect change in our community, and what a change they have made? Unintentionally, the Students for Change used the FCPS portrait of a graduate to bring attention to the Jeb Stuart name. They communicated with people using change.org to create a successful petition. They collaborated with each other and members of the community, namely the Fairfax County NAACP, to get guidance and support. The Students for Change used ethical and global citizenship skills by showing empathy and compassion for others. They used creativity and critical thinking by thinking outside the box to create solutions that brought us all here tonight. They're goal-directed and resilient, frequently taking stands that at times have made them unpopular with members of the school and the community. Most impressively, the Students for Change shined a light on a dark place in our history. Without these impressive young women, we might continue to overlook that Jeb Stuart was a traitor to his country who took up arms for the right to keep black people in chains. We might have easily forgotten that until 2001, our school had a Confederate flag emblazoned on our basketball court. Without the Students for Change, post-Churston, FCPS would have acted like Congress does time and time again, and done nothing after a time of national tragedy. But we're not having that conversation today, because the Students for Change, Marlee, Anna, Lydia, won't let us do nothing. I ask you today, esteemed School Board members, to honor the hard work put forth by the Students for Change. Please vote to change the name of Jeb Stuart High School. Not only has it ever been an FCPS student-created project, it's also been an exemplar for the portrait of a graduate, and most importantly, it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Levy. I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name. Kate Walter, to be followed by George Waters.
Good evening. My name is Kate Walter. I'd like to express my concerns about the process to change Jeb Stuart High School's name. Three minutes is a short time to talk on this subject, so I'd like to ask you to please visit www.stuartfacts.com for more details. I am a Mason District constituent. My daughter graduated from Stuart in 2014, and my son is a rising senior. Both of my children were pupil placed at Stuart for the excellent IB program. We choose to be a part of the Stuart community. I am beginning my sixth year of service in the Stuart PTSA, and my fourth as president. The PTSA has not taken a position on the actual name change itself, but we confirmed a commitment to the public engagement process. The general consensus is that the name change is not a priority issue for our community. It is divisive, and we do not feel we can afford to fracture our limited volunteer base. We are concerned about the actual costs and who will bear them. The PTSA feels that the full school board needs to provide a recorded vote on whether or not a name change is warranted, so that it is clear this decision is an accountable priority for our overall school system. The remainder of these remarks reflect my own views. I am not in favor of the motion to create a Jeb Stuart High School renaming working group. The very name of the group underscores, again, that our school board member has moved away from the views of her constituency and toward a personal agenda. Why doesn't the working group reflect the view of the majority, more along the line of a Jeb Stuart High School Name Preservation Working Group? Last week, I wrote to Ms. Evans on this very concept, saying, you do not have agreement that a name change is needed. In fact, you have very strong opposition to a name change. Now you want to use scarce public-school resources to force a change. I do not see this as an appropriate use of public funds. If you personally feel so strong that you decide to pursue the issue, I feel you should do so as a private citizen and not using your public office. Renaming Stuart should be a concern to Fairfax County citizens beyond the Stuart community. Change costs will be borne by taxpayers across the county who had just had their real estate taxes increased, and now are being asked to support a new meals tax. In addition, changing the school name will lead to calls for changing additional school names, and then perhaps spreads to the renaming of highways, neighborhoods, and even counties or school boards. What standards will we use to make these judgments and to rewrite our own histories? I personally believe the community has spoken, and that the discussion should be done. I ask that you vote no to the motion to create a Jeb Stuart High School renaming working group and/or to the resolution to rename Jeb Stuart High School. Thank you.
George Waters, to be followed by Michelle Brickner.
Members of the school board, I want to thank you so much for your service. Mr. Moon and Ms. Strauss, to see you still here after all these years is really heartwarming. I somehow managed between the parking lot and here to lose my verbal version of what I'm going to say. You've got my written statement, so let me just try and talk a little bit directly from the heart. We've been, my family's been very long involved in FCPS. My wife was chairman of the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee for years. She was served on it for six. She was PTA president at all three schools and studying Jeb Stuart. We strongly feel that the name of the school needs to change. I, you know, we've had this sort of debate, you know, what did the school board mean in 1958? If you look at the surrounding circumstances in 1958, you look at the lawsuit that was against this county government at the time, against the school board, you look at the fact that two years later, the school board passed a resolution prohibiting black students at integrated schools from playing scholastic sports. It's hard to imagine that the school board at that time was not trying to send some sort of a message. There's no smoking gun, there's no school board minutes that said, yeah, we got them. No one would expect there would be. But I think you need to put yourselves in the position of a black student at Jeb Stuart, looking at a logo of a guy that until a few years ago was carrying a Confederate flag. What was the message that's being sent to that student? That it was a welcoming environment? What about the students who were told they couldn't play athletic sports? I just think that part of history is something that we're trying to sweep under the rug here in this opposition. Jeb Stuart is incredibly diverse. Everybody has pointed that out, but it's diverse-
Members of the school board, I want to thank you so much for your service. Mr. Moon and Ms. Strauss, to see you still here after all these years is really heartwarming. I somehow managed between the parking lot and here to lose my verbal version of what I'm going to say. You've got my written statement, so let me just try and talk a little bit directly from the heart. We've been, my family's been very long involved in FCPS. My wife was chairman of the Gifted and Talented Committee, Advisory Committee for years. She was served on it for six. She was PTA president at all three schools and studying Jeb Stuart. We strongly feel that the name of the school needs to change. I, I, you know, we've, we've had this sort of debate, you know, what did the school board mean in 1958? If you look at the surrounding circumstances in 1958, you look at the lawsuit that was against this county government at the time, against the school board, you look at the fact that two years later, the school board passed a resolution prohibiting black students at integrated schools from playing scholastic sports. It's hard to imagine that the school board at that time was not trying to send some sort of a message. There's no smoking gun, there's no school board minutes that said, "Yeah, we got 'em." No one would expect there would be. But I think you need to put yourselves in the position of a black student at FCP, at Jeb Stuart, looking at a logo of a guy that until a few years ago was carrying a Confederate flag. What was the message that's being sent to that student? That it was a welcoming environment? What about the students who were told they couldn't play athletic sports? I just think that part of history is something that we're trying to sweep under the rug here in this opposition. Jeb Stuart is incredibly diverse. Everybody has pointed that out, but it's diverse in lieu of the segregationists, you know, not, not because of them. And we shouldn't forget that either. My wife did have a statement that she wanted me to read, and I've got one paragraph here, so I'll read that as well. Regardless of what you believe to be the true meaning of states' rights, or whether you believe the name was a deliberate poke in the eye by FCPS at the time, no one will dispute that Jeb Stuart fought for the Confederacy, whose mission it was to divide the Union and secede. The high school bearing his name has a mission diametrically opposite, that of unifying one of the most diverse school populations in the country. I think it's time for a change. During Cindy's tenure on this board determined that it wanted to be sensitive and changed the name of the Gifted and Talented Program to instead have it be known as the Advanced Academic Program, because you didn't want to send a message to non-participating kids that they weren't talented. Times change, and you did the right thing. The time for sensitivity is once again with us. If the state of South Carolina can remove the Confederate flag in schools, from Texas to Louisiana can change the names of their schools after Confederate war generals, so too can progressive Fairfax County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. Next, we have former school board member, Michelle Brickner.
My name's Michelle Brickner, and I previously served on this board for eight years. I propose you hold a special audit, an audit on the promises you make and the promises you break. The track record is shocking. All children in this system must be protected from bullying, including those struggling with gender confusion. Common sense accommodation should be made. However, these must not jeopardize the privacy, modesty, or religious liberty of the rest of the students and staff. Last year on May 7th, when the board added gender identity to the nondiscrimination policy, Mr. McElveen stated, "I cannot emphasize enough, after we pass this policy tonight, nothing will change." Mr. Moon stated, "We will not be changing what we have always been doing." Ms. Hines stated, "We are not legally required to do anything in particular with our bathrooms." Ms. McLaughlin stated, "The fear that this will change bathroom practice and locker rooms of our children is simply not true." She read a comment from Dr. Garza, which stated, "We currently accommodate a few students, providing them access to other facilities, like single-use bathrooms." That was the official practice before this policy change. In fact, these new regs change everything that you said they wouldn't. Despite all of your promises, this new regulation dictates that a transgender student's choice of facilities absolutely supersedes the privacy, state, safety, modesty, and religious or cultural convictions of all other students. No wonder you wanted this regulation to go quietly into effect with no public scrutiny. Shame on you. Ms. Kofak said last year, "If the motion passes, our next step will be hire a consultant to develop appropriate regulations." The truth, as FOIA revealed, was that you had already selected a consultant, and you are still holding that report funded by our tax dollars promised 10 months ago. Release that report to the public. Now, you schedule a two-hour closed session to talk about this with an outside counsel on Monday and an open session next Thursday. What else are you hiding? It took 10 years to change high school start times, but you are rushing through major changes that will affect every student and teacher and staff member for, in this county. Bottom line, your promises last year were lies, and because of your covert actions, you have lost the community trust. Protect student privacy and go back to how we were handling these situations last year, when, as you reported, we had no problems.
Thank you, Ms. Brickner. Ruby Nicado to be followed by Deborah Danker.
I'm going to go ahead and take Andrea Lafferty's position. Can you hear me? I'm already speaker number 10, so I'm just going to...
I'm sorry, are you Ms. Nicado? The next speaker on the list is Ruby Nicado, is that right?
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Did you want to speak?
Okay, keep, keep, just let's not move the clock for a second. These are the people I have on the list in front of me: Ruby Nicado, Deborah Danker, Denise Patton, and Monica Cameron. Those are the people I expect to be here. If one of those people has yielded their space to someone else, they need to come up front and physically yield their spot to someone else. Is Ruby Nicado here? Hey, come front. Where is Ms. Nicado?
I'm Ruby Nicado, and I yield my time to Andrea Lafferty.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Andrea Lafferty, president of the Traditional Values Coalition, resident of Fairfax County, and mother. We have great compassion for those struggling with self-hatred and gender identity issues. There was a way to accommodate transgendered students and still protect the students' privacy rights, but FCS, Fairfax, has done otherwise. Based on extensive research of your mystery consultant, we know what he recommended, and we know how it'll play out. Parents and community, be forewarned, these regulations are just the first step. So what are the best practices that Mrs. McLaughlin promised us? First best practice is to blame everyone else for the issues faced by those who are psychologically unhealthy, claiming that if the student or teacher's gender identity is not affirmed, they will suffer from psychological distress. Another best practice maintains it's irrelevant whether a person's objection to a student's identity or expression is based on sincerely held religious beliefs. Section 4B refers to maximization, maximization of social integration. Best practice is, on overnight trips, parents, transgendered students should be allowed to room with peers that match their gender identity, and not disclose the student's transgender status to other students and their parents. Section 4D mandates staff training. Best practice, I quote, "All professionals working in or within schools should be prepared to talk about gender identity in a positive, informative way. All school staff, from leadership to bus drivers, should receive meaningful, ongoing professional development on LGBT topics." Section 6 mandates the use of pronouns. There are 50-plus. Will our first graders be required to use general, gender-neutral pronouns? This is my friend Sam. Z came to my house today. I borrowed a book from here. This book is hers. And what about those showers? Under Section 7E, boys who think they're girls are allowed in the girls' bathroom. Best practices? Any student who feels uncomfortable sharing facilities with a transgender student should be allowed to use another facility, like the nurse's bathroom. But a transgender student should never be forced to use alternative facilities to make other students comfortable. So if real girls don't like it, they have to wait. Section 8 says, "Boys can sing in the girls' choir." Section 8B directs that when boys and girls are separated to learn how their bodies develop, boys who think they're girls must join the girls, even though the boy bodies will never function like a woman's. Another best practice considers it erroneous to believe that a transgender girl, who's really a boy, will have a competitive advantage over the other players. The bizarre and the corrupt have joined forces to thwart the public's interest at the expense of common good and our children.
Next up, Deborah Danker to be followed by Denise Patton. Is Deborah Danker here? Deborah Danker to be followed by Denise Patton.
Good evening. I support changing the name of Jeb Stuart High School. It's my neighborhood school. It's a wonderful school. And it prepared each one of my three children very, very well, not only for their college studies, but for life in the wider world. So I thank you for supporting our school over all these years. And now I'm asking you to support a name change for Stuart High School. What we're talking about is revisiting a decision that was taken in 1958 to name one of the country's white high schools after a Confederate general. I have to say, I'm struck by how fitting it is that we're meeting tonight in this building, which is steeped in the racial history of that period. As you know, when this school here opened in 1954, the Supreme Court had already ordered the nation's public schools to desegregate. Nonetheless, Fairfax County went ahead and opened Luther Jackson as its first black high school. In fact, it was only then, for the first time, that black children were allowed to attend public high school in Fairfax County at all. Before that, they had been forced to travel outside the county each day just to go to high school. And despite the Supreme Court order, Fairfax County schools remained segregated for a long time. Full integration didn't come until much later, until 1965. And it was right in the middle of this period, in the middle of the state of Virginia's fight against integration, that Jeb Stuart High School was given its name. So our effort to change that name is most emphatically not about ignoring history or forgetting history. It's about whether we continue to put the name of Jeb Stuart in a place of honor by keeping his name on our high school, despite the fact that his only real claim to fame was fighting for the causes of the Confederacy. I worry that a decision to keep his name on the school could well be seen as perpetuating that old stereotype of Virginia as still clinging to a racist past. In that case, keeping the name would send a message to some people that this area is not welcoming to everyone. So please, change the name. If you do, I believe it would help send a different signal, a positive signal, to people of all races, that Fairfax County is a tolerant, caring, and open community in which to live and to raise their families. Thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Is, is George Becerra here? I think we, come on down, Mr. Becerra. And then after Mr. Becerra, we have Monica Cameron, and Denise, Denise Patton, then Monica Cameron. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for letting me speak. I was a little late. Good evening, Dr. Garza, and school board members. I'm here to talk about tonight, about the local plan for the gifted for 2016 through 2021. I'm here for the board to consider universal screening for all students for levels 2 and 3. I'm sorry if this is going to get technical for the crowd, but my speech is for you guys. To specifically only use Naglary test to eliminate the CAGAT and the JIBRAS test. Long story short, the CAGAT does not measure IQ or intelligence. The JIBRAS is subjected by the AART. Also, the CAGAT does not equate for students who do not know English and are gifted. Another aspect to this is, so again, only Naglary test for levels 2 and 3 to build the farm system for your level 4, which you guys have had lawsuits, federal lawsuits on. On top of that, besides the Naglary test, to use the MRA, the DRA, and the WIDA test. That's the system already uses, and the WIDA does retain for English, non-English dominant learners. As I've passed out to you, you've seen a table that shows the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights section, and there's the data in that table. It shows disparities between black and white, and Hispanic and white students. There, that was 2011 data. 2013 data will be coming out next month, and hopefully the DIT and Ms. Loveglass is shop, will get that information and can provide that, and I'm asking for three things out of Chairman Hines, and also hopefully the rest of the board. One thing is for the DIT to update that table by September's meeting. Trust me, if I can do it with an X divided by Y, I'm pretty sure staff can do that, and by, by September. To create the same table, here's a very important part, to create the same table for all schools. The issue is to see that table and disparities at each school, which every parent has the right to see. And also to maybe eliminate or have less conversation of schools being segregated in these schools. Also, for another aspect, maybe to Mrs. Corbett Sanders, that I've served with for a couple of years, for both AIPAC and MSAOC to work on this project for universal, universal screening. Not as the charge for next year, but as a project to work together to build team consensus among parents in this county. As this issue's about equity in AAP or participation at the school level, the committee would like this board to pass the one Fairfax resolution that the Board of Supervisors just passed on Tuesday. I'm assuming you have a lot on your plate. On July 28th, there's only two weeks, two weeks away, and I can wait for that. I've waited for about two years for this. Also, for this gift, for the new chairman or chairmen or chairwoman, to please keep Ms. Dariana Kofak and Ms. Megan McLaughlin as the only two reps, just like the Board of Supervisors are keeping Supervisor McKay and Supervisor Hudson. Once you get into three alternates, it plays into the whole FOIA thing, and gets a little dicey, and public announcements. Also, for this board, well, last thing is, I support the name change, but more importantly, I also support the consensus build and having the working group to come to that decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Denise Patton to be followed by Monica Cameron.
I will cede my slot to Nick Pichota, who is a 2012 graduate of Jeb Stuart High School.
Good evening. I urge you to vote against Resolution 6.02 because there are real problems that plague Jeb Stuart High School that desperately need your attention first and can no longer be ignored. These problems include lack of high-quality teachers across the board, at least a 1:1 ratio of students to computers, specialized counselors, heightened after-school program funding, vocational programs, and much more. This past Sunday, our Raider community lost one of its own. One of my friends and someone who had a heavy impact on our community took his own life as a result of problems and situations that began at his time at Stuart. At this moment, there are hundreds of people gathering in Jeb Stuart's parking lot to host a vigil. I'd like to talk about these people, people that I have had the honor of calling my peers. They are people of all ethnicities and backgrounds that have always been there and been able to come together even in the face of our nation's prejudice. They are models of acceptance, unity, and equality that should be touted as our nation's role models. Instead, this resolution attempts to create change based on perceived racial divides and inaccurate historical information that has only tarnished the reputation that we are proud of. The fact is, almost 80% of the students in the school fall into the nation's minority category. 64.4% of the students are on free or reduced lunch. As you know, in 2014, 2015, the VDOE put an accreditation warning on Stuart due to failing grades. The overwhelming majority of students at Stuart face so many different challenges, from a rampant drug market within the school, single parents, low income, and low economic mobility. It's no wonder that in the, for the past five years in a row, Jeb Stuart High School has had the highest dropout percentage out of any school in this county. Barack Obama said this past Tuesday in Dallas, "As a society, we choose to under-invest in decent schools. We allow poverty to fester so that neighborhood, entire neighborhoods offer no prospect for gainful employment." Ring a bell? Resolution 6.02 undermines the majority of both the students and taxpayers that voted against changing the name. It is clear that Jeb Stuart High School is not making the mark academically or extracurricularly. Any money raised either publicly or privately needs to go towards providing the school with educational resources that produce results. This is what we elected you for. That being said, as a community and alumni, we want to work with you to provide the best resources for the school and are willing to do so. That's why I stand in front of you here tonight. I again urge this board to vote down Resolution 6.02 and cease any discussion on the matter and to appropriately address the educational shortfalls that plague Jeb Stuart. And with the remainder of my time, I would like to have a moment of silence for the member of the community that we lost. Thank you. Thank you.
Monica Cameron.
Our hearts and prayers, our hearts and prayers go out to the families of Stuart. Okay, you ready? All right. Good evening. I'm Monica Cameron. I'm a mother of two student athletes, and I'm here to talk about the proposed transgender regulation. I can't imagine all the issues that arise when a child is confused about his or her sense of gender. It must take a toll on the entire family in every circumstance. We need to support these families and provide a safe, supportive learning environment for all of our students. I agree with you. However, as I have... However, as I have reviewed the proposed transgender regulation, I have found it generates more questions and problems than solutions. I have grave concerns for the impact this policy will have on the health and well-being of our over 186,000 students and the staff that have to comply. I particularly want to address the impact on student athletes. Section nine of the proposed regulation on student activities and athletics stipulates that transgender students shall be allowed to participate in Virginia High School League activities. Current VHSL policy says that with as little as a doctor's note, a transgender student can play on the team opposite to his or her biological sex. I stand here today representing many, many parents and coaches who reject this policy as a flagrant safety and fairness issue. Sports are and should remain segregated by sex and age to ensure safety and honorable fair competition at all levels. My husband and I have two high schoolers and who play school sports. Our daughter is a petite 5'2" field hockey player. And field hockey is an aggressive sport with a lot of player injuries. A transgender male player would benefit from the undeniable biological advantages of strength and size. Playing alongside female players would not only be dangerous to our girls, but would typically give the team an unfair advantage over other all-female teams. Another example, my six-foot-two son plays high school lacrosse, and even at his size, he suffered a hit so powerful it serrated his liver and he was hospitalized. Boys' lacrosse allows body checks, where girls' lacrosse does not. Having a biological female on a boys' team would put the girl at enormous risk for bodily injury because of her biological differences, and this disadvantage would demoralize the male players. I served in the Army for 17 years, and I've experienced firsthand the physical demands needed to serve as an effective team player. It is a simple biological fact that the vast majority of women cannot meet the same physical demands as men. Biological differences between males and females have a clear, indisputable impact on athletic performance, and they are the reason we have sex-segregated sports to begin with. This transgender regulation endangers students of both sexes. In the context of transgender sports participation, this regulation is not safe or honorable for any of our students, and I urge you not to consider it or pass it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have five, we have five entrants of video testimony, which we will begin now.
I had the pleasure of representing Jeb Stewart High School and the surrounding community for 15 years on the County Board of Supervisors and then in Congress for 14 years. My kids went to Jeb Stewart High School. Their mother went to Jeb Stewart High School, and I've got some grandchildren that I hope will be able to go there. What troubles me about the renaming at this point is there's no community consensus or even majority to move ahead on this. The discussion has really not been very robust, and it hasn't been very widespread, and there's certainly not the kind of consensus I think you need to move ahead with a name change at this, at this stage of the game. You're setting a precedent in the way that you handle this, in the way you build the community consensus, and I think if you're prepared to do this, you better go all out. It's going to be Robert E. Lee High School. It's going to be Mosby Elementary School, and there's no telling to where this stops. In many ways, it's reminiscent of Mao's Cultural Revolution, where a group of people don't like history and they come in and erase it. There's similar chapters, of course, in 1984 by Orwell. That's not to say that names shouldn't be changed under some circumstances. I think communities need broad discussions about these. You have changing demographics in communities. In this case, I've been associated with Jeb Stewart High School for well over 40 years. I've raised tens of thousands of dollars for the school, and I see an erosion of support for the school with this name change the way it's currently being handled. But I hope the board will give it appropriate, an appropriate level of discussion and defer this thing so that the current students, the PTAs, can have more input. We ask in this case, where are the resolutions from the PTA calling for the name change? Where's the resolutions from student government calling for the name change? What about the surrounding community, which in the community consensus building opted 60% not to change the name? I just think the precedential way this has been handled is going to be harmful long-term to the school board, and I would oppose the name change under these circumstances. I was proud to send my kids to Jeb Stewart High School at a time when it was the most diverse high school in the United States according to National Geographic. We were very proud of the diversity the school represented. And over time, the term Jeb Stewart High School has developed a completely secondary meaning to anything that Jeb Stewart, that the soldier did. And I think these secondary meanings also carry a connotation here that's important. Jeb Stewart High School has been a symbol of diversity, and it's been a symbol of bringing people together in a way that works.
Hi, my name is Tom Penlin. I've been a resident of this area for 33 years. I have two boys, both attend the entire pyramid, working their way up, graduating from Stewart High School. And we were proud to be a part of it. When came to Stewart, we found it was probably most diverse school in the United States. It was later identified as the most diverse school in the United States, and even the President, President Bush, found it interesting to come here and talk to the kids and talk about it. Even National Geographic's found an opportunity to spend almost six months talking about all the different people that were here. There was upwards of 80 different countries, 56 different languages, and my children flourished in that environment. Never was the name Jeb Stewart ever in question related to anything to do with civil wars and things of that nature. I'm a Raider. I'll always be a Raider, always be a part of this school. We found they needed funding. Funding came by many means. Through efforts of myself and others in the community, we started what was called Tag Day, helping the band earn funds. Another thing that we also started with myself and other people that helped were the Taste of the Town. We followed through the Thurgood Marshall Scholarship. Basically, myself and another individual put that one together and refurbished the current Jeb Stewart Scholarship Program. This school needed funds, it needed money, it needed parents that were active. When you consider that over 60% of the kids on free lunches, you need a very active working group in order to make things work, and you're looking at $600,000 or $700,000 to just go out for it, just to change a name is because you can do it. And then says, well, we'll do fundraisers to pay for it. And money does not come easy in a school system like this. But the education and the learning, it does. The kids get along great. They have a great opportunity, and both my boys graduated. They went on to colleges, one with a master's, the other graduated from Colorado, and have enjoyed every aspect of being involved with this school. Now that said, the school board can just, with waving of a pen, decide to create a group that's going to go out and basically rename the school without involvement from this community. The community doesn't like it. When 60% of the kids says, "Don't change the name," they were only able with a survey to get 35% of the community to agree to a name change. Why are we changing a name? We'd like to ask you to reconsider Proposition 6.02 and delete it, get rid of it, but whatever you do, let's not change the name. Thank you very much. Bye.
Hi, my name is Trippie Penlin. I've been a resident of this area for 33 years. Both of my sons went through all of the Sleepy Hollow, Belvedere, Glasgow, and Stewart. They graduated in 99 and 96. During that time, they were very happy with the school they were in. They did not have any racial issues or anything of that type of thing. My youngest son was a soccer player and played. It was all Hispanic and everything else, and they were all friends. My older son was crew and golf and swim team. Both boys were swim team. It was an awesome school. They both went to colleges that they wanted. T.R. graduated from University of Colorado Boulder. David graduated from JMU. They got an excellent education while here. It seemed that there were no political issues, that type of thing going on here. I spent seven years fundraising for the school, sewing costumes for the plays, sewing costumes for band, and it just was something we were very much, we involved our lives in here, and it was all a conglomerate of people and a wonderful school. I hate to see the school board come out and attempt to change a name which they think is going to correct some issue of discrimination or something to that effect, when that money that would be used for changing the name and new uniforms and new signage, et cetera, could be used in a better place, used for the students and better educational opportunities, better things for the computers for all of the students and that type of thing. Thank you very much, and I hope you will reconsider.
Hello, my name is Janet Hall. I live at 6424 Cavalier Corridor in Falls Church. We have lived here for over 30 years. Both of our children have gone through the Pyramid II schools and graduated from Jeb Stewart High School 20 years ago. Hard to believe it's been 20 years. For the past 20 years, I've also served on the Fairfax County Planning Commission, and I have sat through numerous hearings. And one thing I am truly concerned about is the approach to renaming Jeb Stewart High School. I really don't feel as if the community has been involved and been given an opportunity to participate in this discussion, but we are now. Many of our neighbors have been spending hours reading history, looking at all the research, and they'll talk to you about that. I'm going to talk to you about cost. We did the first Taste of the Town, and it took everything we have to raise $6,000. Now you want to raise over $700,000 for one school. What do you think is going to happen after you change Jeb Stewart? I don't think you appreciate how this is going to spin out of control and how the money, where are you going to get it? And not only that, you're going to waste hundreds of thousands of dollars for the students who need it the most, changing a name. You need to speak about history. You need to teach children what's going on today and how their history will affect them in the future. I really think it is a waste of money to change Jeb Stewart when it is a golden opportunity to teach history. Again, the school is estimating $700,000 to change Jeb Stewart. There is no consideration on how it is to affect the rest of Fairfax County, changing street signs and safety and et cetera. I would implore you to vote down this resolution and start again. The resolution does not permit you to keep the name, and as far as I'm concerned, the very best thing you can do is keep the name of Jeb Stewart High School, save the money, put it to use where it belongs with our students. I really do hope you'll consider this in the future, and I'm counting on you to make the best use of the funds that we have to educate our children. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Chaney Mullins, and I am representing Concerned Women for America, including our CEO Penny Nance, our many members across this nation, including many mothers in Fairfax County. And one of our core issues is education, and we believe that the rights of all students and parents should be respected. And we are deeply concerned that this board has had a one-sided approach to student rights. When it comes to things like family life curriculum committees and now these gender identity guidelines, we believe that the entire community needs ample time for consideration and information and that multiple voices should be involved in the process. Now, we know that the issue of gender identity is delicate, and we wish to approach it with love and grace and especially the common ground against the horrendous practice of bullying that many transgender students have unfortunately experienced. But we also feel it is not in the best interest of children to say that their bodies and their minds cannot be the same. We find this leaves them disunited. And we are also especially concerned for the rights of religious students who feel that believing in male and female will get them persecuted or punished in some way or also put them in danger in some cases. We know that each student is unique, and they all have their own story to tell of the confusion of puberty. But evidence shows that up to 80% of children lose transgender feelings over time and that gender transitions can result in regret, further confusion, and health risks. But in order to respect the needs of all students, there are solutions and compromises we can make that do not put students in positions of having to compromise their own religious or cultural values. And the guidelines as they currently stand are both poorly written and do not consider all of the implications for the large and diverse students that we have in Fairfax County. What about women who feel unsafe with men in their bathroom? Even if they are harmless men, they have a cultural modesty or a safety concern that makes them uncomfortable. Do their feelings matter? Do the feelings of girls that will be passed over for sports scholarships in a twist of Title IX, do they matter? Surely all students matter, and we can be oriented towards true inclusion, including the rights of religious students in these decisions when the curriculum comes out and with the working session to consider these gender identity guidelines. Thank you.
Item 3.02, Student Representative Matters. I call on Ms. Chu.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you all for the kind welcome. First, we'd like to acknowledge any Boy Scouts in the audience here fulfilling requirements for their merit badges and advancement. If you could please stand to be recognized. Before touching on my top priorities for the year, I'd also like to thank the Superintendent Student Advisory Council for electing me their 46th student representative to the school board. I absolutely pledge to do my best to advocate for the almost 190,000 students in FCPS. I promise to uphold my duty and serve as a liaison between our students and the board and prioritize the students' needs and concerns above all else. I'd also like to give a very quick shout-out to my predecessor Ben Press, a great role model of mine who I know is watching live. So thank you, Ben, for everything you've done for us in the past, and I hope to fill the big shoes you've left me. I'd also like to pledge to visit all the high and secondary schools across the county so as to represent the students as a whole and not just its parts. So with that, in the upcoming year, I'd like to prioritize the continuation of mental health initiatives, reducing mental health stigmas while fostering an environment in which open discussion and peer support is encouraged. I hope to address concerns about student workloads, gathering usable data to help all of our students achieve a healthy balance of activities in their lives. And finally, after serving on the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee in the past year, I hope to look further into improving equity of access to advanced academic and extracurricular resources for all of our students in the county. So thank you again, and I look forward to the many experiences I'll get to share with you and our county in the upcoming year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Chu. We look forward to working with you. Item 3.03, Strategic Plan Goal Four, Resource Stewardship. I call on Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is our fourth and final report for this year's first, the first year of our strategic plan. And so I do appreciate the support we've received from the board. I also want to commend our team who've worked very, very hard to put these reports together. So we, I believe Krista Michael and Susan Quinn are prepared to walk you through the PowerPoint. I want to remind the public, there is a more comprehensive written report that's available also online, should you be interested in seeing the more thorough report that's associated with this presentation. I also want to mention to the board and also to the public that there is a scheduled work session on this particular presentation scheduled for this coming Monday. So there'll be a more thorough discussion and in-depth opportunity for the board to ask questions about the presentation that we have prepared tonight. I think we're looking for the, there should be a technical term for it. It's not the clicker, is it? The whatever that is. The clicker, right? Okay. So we'll start, I guess Susan Quinn will- So we'll start, I guess Susan Quinn will tee this report up for you all. And one final note, there will be, there already is a scheduled presentation and engagement with the board to talk about and reflect upon this year's reports, all the four major reports, at our planning retreat this next weekend. So the board will have an opportunity to give us feedback over all elements of the plan, the metrics that were included, to give us feedback as we look to next year's reports. So we have both those important conversations scheduled for the coming week. Susan, it's all yours.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Good evening. We are very excited to be here tonight presenting the work of Goal Four: Resource Stewardship. And I would say behind me is the core team, but a couple of the team members are actually sitting in the audience. They're actually going to be participating in the presentation with me tonight. Some of the information in this goal you may have seen previously, as it has many connections to the division work that we're doing. So our objective tonight is to focus on the areas that have not been highlighted in the prior presentations or the goal reports. In addition to sharing the progress of the monitoring metrics, we will highlight other key activities that we have already completed or are underway to further support the efforts of achieving the desired outcomes of the strategic plan. So as Dr. Garza mentioned, Resource Stewardship is the last of the four strategic goal areas. This goal is about being responsible stewards and how that is demonstrated throughout the year. So it's fitting that this presentation is the last goal report as we wrap up the fiscal This goal has two overarching strategies. Strategy 10 is to maximize and align our resources to be accountable and transparent with the community regarding the resources entrusted to FCPS. There are two desired outcomes. Utilizing a budget decision-making framework that includes financial management principles and standards, and benchmarking our work to demonstrate efficiency and effectiveness. Six monitoring metrics have been identified for this strategy, and I'm going to actually turn it over to Ms. Michael, who is the Assistant Superintendent of Financial Services. And she will start off with the first metric, which is to report on the alignment of resources and budget decisions to the budget decision-making framework.
The first monitoring metric is reporting the alignment of resource allocation to the budget decision framework. As part of our future work, we'll be developing a decision-making framework to improve resource alignment and enhance transparency. This framework will include tools such as return on investment calculations and enhanced fiscal policies adopted by the school board. Potential new policies could include appropriate levels of fund balance, use of one-time funding, and long-term financial planning. Currently, FCPS's budget is developed using the principles of sustainability, alignment with the strategic plan, engagement with our stakeholders, and transparency. This year, FCPS began the FY '17 budget process, rebuilding from the losses that have been sustained since the economic downturn. Initial investments were made in key priority areas, employee salaries, and an elementary class size reduction. In addition to addressing teacher class size, the budget also provided a base salary increase for all of our employees and a living wage adjustment for those employees whose pay was below the living wage. As a result of the limited financial resources and significant needs, it's imperative that FCPS take a long-term fiscal approach when developing budgets. FCPS's highest priority has been and will continue to be funding our instructional programs, and every effort is made to manage costs and to direct resources to our instructional programs. That's evidenced by the fact that more than 85% of our budget is allocated to our instructional The Government Finance Officers Association states, "Good public participation practices can help governments be more accountable and responsive, and can also help improve the public's perception of government performance and the value that that public receives from government." As part of the FY '17 budget, FCPS initiated on the precedent level of community engagement. In addition to the standard community meetings and annual public hearings, three program components were designed to maximize our community's involvement. Members of the community contributed to the budget ideas via a tool called User Voice, an online tool that allowed them to submit suggestions as well as vote on other people's suggestions. Then a budget task force was created to provide recommendations to help us address a potential budget shortfall. Third, FCPS created a sophisticated yet easy-to-use online budget proposal tool to gather specific recommendations from citizens on how to potentially balance the budget. In total, more than 3,500 submissions were received. FCPS received a Magna Award from the National School Boards Association for our budget communication this year, and FCPS was also nominated for an Emmy for our video, "An Explanation of FCPS's Budget," which was viewed more than 13,000 times. The second monitoring metric is return on investment measurements. In most business environments, the link between expenditures and outcomes can be evaluated using a return on investment approach, where return usually means profit. FCPS, like other school divisions, strives to ensure that the dollars spent result in a combination of monetary, cost savings or cost avoidance, and non-monetary benefits, for example, student achievement or teacher retention. Approaches for evaluating the link between expenditures and benefits exist on a continuum of complexity ranging from low to high. As approaches increase along this continuum, so do the data and expertise that's required for that calculation. Less complex approaches, for example, like cost per pupil, are more descriptive than evaluative, merely describing the outcomes observed after related funds are spent. More complex approaches become increasingly evaluative, and evaluative approaches allow for judgment on the efficacy or success of a particular expenditure. For example, a monetary return on investment measure would measure the level of savings or cost avoidance that could be achieved if additional funds were expended for a specific program. Or an academic ROI could be used to evaluate which dollars spent across the division are the most effective at improving student achievement. As shown in this graphic, as approaches move along this continuum of complexity, the amount of time required to execute also increases, making approaches with higher complexity less feasible options for quick decisions. The following slide provides descriptions of each of those ROI measures. The Office of Program Evaluation examined the cost avoidance return on investment, which is a subset of that monetary ROI, for the Family and Early Childhood Education Program, FSEP. In particular, that study aimed to understand whether current expenditures associated with FSEP could potentially help to avoid or lower future expenses related to specialized programs for services, specifically special education and English for speakers of other languages services. The report found that the FSEP program contributes to a significant cost avoidance for FCPS. Up to 6.4 million in future expenses are saved across each cohort's K-12 educational career from decreased need for special education and ESOL services. I'm now going to turn it over to Jeff Plattenberg to talk about capital improvement data.
Thank you, Kristin. You can see why the support side is really excited about Goal Four, because as Susan had mentioned, you know, really we are inextricably linked in each of the goal areas. And in the area of the renovation queue, nothing could be seen more than the depth and breadth of the amount of time that that queue has been going on and evolving. The work involving the current renovation queue, which contains 63 schools, began in FY 2011. At the conclusion of FY 2016, 9% or 14% of the projects are complete, with an additional 11% or 70% under construction and another 13% or 21% in the planning or permitting phase. By early FY 2022, FCPS will have completed over 50% of the projects listed in the queue. Although the construction costs do remain low, as we all know, the limited available resources and funding available to maintain a reasonable renovation cycle are deeply challenging. Ideally, renovation should be programmed to accommodate a 25- to 20-year renovation cycle in accordance with School Board Policy 8258. As I said, the present cycle that we're on really has us at approximate average year of our facilities of 34 years' age, and that's expected to increase by not being able to fund it. Although we've partnered with the county and done some amazing things, we still have a lot of work to do, and it's expected to anticipate an increase to more than 40 years without additional funding. An increase of $87 million annually to about $242 million is required to allow the school construction renovations to fall within the school board policy. The next item we have is enrollment projections. This is another area where we're really excited about what's been going on with some of the new work that we have going on in the area of our demographic software. Some of the key drivers for our projections as we go through our annual capital improvement program each year are the recent historical enrollment patterns, local and regional economic conditions, geocoded birth data, which is something that we're really excited about that will allow us to disaggregate a lot of the data that we do present, student yield ratios from new housing forecasts, and also the in-migration and out-migration and student transfers. A couple of interesting points to note is that we in FCPS have an incredibly talented group of planners. A lot of folks don't realize that we have been within 1% of the variance of projections over an extended period of time. When you look at the Washington Area Boards of Education Guide, we continuously really do an exceptional job. And that's not just tuning the horn of the staff and the committed folks here at FCPS, but it really is because of our processes that have evolved over time. But when we take a look at the aggregated data in the attachment that you'll see and the report that you'll be provided, you'll see that school by school, we have a long way to go. And so we've got opportunities there that we're hoping, in fact, we know that our demographic software is really going to aid us and assist us in that endeavor. In fact, as you'll notice, the evolution of the CIP has continued to get constant recognition, I think, before this board by not only the community groups, but also members of the The next item that we have is going to be provided about communication, and I think Mr. Matt Gilmour is going to be presenting this item. So, Matt?
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening. So the first item that we have is that one of the areas that we've been looking at is to continually measure our customer satisfaction levels across multiple audiences. And so one of the key areas that we're going to be pursuing over the next few months is the development of a suite of surveys that will allow us to measure the overall engagement of a number of our key audiences and a number of our key constituencies, and to determine our overall satisfaction. So there'll be a number of surveys that will be developed in order to gauge that, and that will be work that is ongoing throughout the fall and into next year. The second area that I'm going to touch on is really around the measurement of having a portfolio of varied business partnerships classified by type. I think it's interesting to note that since 1985, the FCPS Partnerships Office has been establishing mutually beneficial partnerships based on our shared goals with our business community, with our nonprofit community, and in order to benefit all the children of Fairfax County. In the last year alone, we've been working hard to better define what are the needs of the school system in order to better articulate those to our potential business partners and our nonprofit community partners. In order to do that, we've actually spoken with and over 150 different individuals who actually shared their input and their data with us, from principals to community members to businesses to nonprofit community members, to really shape a shared vision. And so really what we've been focusing on is developing a framework that better articulates the school system's needs in the areas of mentoring, tutoring, needs-based donations, essential workforce development, the arts, STEAM, Get to Green, which is our environmental work, and then obviously ongoing financial gifts. And these are areas that we continue and will continue to refine and have longer-term discussions with our business partners. Today, we have official and unofficial business partnerships across almost every school in the entire school system, and we have more than 300 ongoing partnerships that are in place today. And this is work that we'll continue to refine and ensure that we are maximizing both our business and our community partners' efforts as well as our schools. So, thank you.
So in addition to the decision-making framework, the other desired outcome for Strategy 10 is benchmarking. Benchmarks included in the Goal Four report reflect system-wide activity. FCPS's leadership also monitors other measures to evaluate performance. So our internal benchmarks compare FCPS's performance as measured in a point in time on an ongoing basis. External benchmarks compare FCPS's results to outside organizations. External benchmarks can compare measurements against top organizations to compare best practices, or also compare results from relative peer groups to assess performance against similar organizations. Data for each of the benchmarks on this slide is included in the narrative, and as we continue to review the strategic plan, the system-wide benchmarks will constantly be reassessed. The following slide provides two examples of benchmarks. The first example is an internal benchmark of revenue projection accuracy. FCPS received 99.8% of the revenue that was projected in our FY '16 budget, which exceeded our goal. The second benchmark example is an external benchmark. FCPS coordinates the compilation of comparable budget information across the surrounding jurisdictions through the Washington Area Boards of Education. Each summer, the group meets to review the data collection methodology to ensure that we have accurate comparisons and to share information and best practices. The WABE guide is then produced each fall, which provides the benchmarking data that's available to all of the school districts that participate. The FY '16 Division-wide WABE cost per pupil is $13,718, which you can see on this chart, and FCPS maintained its rank in the middle of the districts in the surrounding area. There are many initiatives that have been completed or ongoing that also support Goal Four, and I'd like to just highlight a few. FCPS's new enrollment projection software was used to inform program planning conversations and the consideration of boundary adjustments this past year. The new SIS parent account provides parents access to their students' information, including attendance, report cards, and grades. The CIP document was restructured in its entirety to incorporate feedback received from various stakeholders. And FCPS partnered with the county to allow students in middle and high school to ride the Fairfax Connector Bus during the 2015 and 2016 school year, and those results were shared with both boards as part of the county's lines of business process. Lastly, FCPS will be implementing mobile data devices or mobile data terminals to allow for up-to-the-minute route and stop information to be shared with drivers, and drivers will also be able to see which students are able to get on and off the bus. The next strategy in Goal Four is Strategy 11. Stakeholders will understand where and how financial resources will be utilized, and FCPS will regularly and systematically advocate for financial resources at the county, state, and federal levels. For this overarching strategy, there are three monitoring metrics. The first metric is disaggregated cost per pupil spending. FCPS produces average cost per pupil and cost per service information that we include in each year's budget documents. For Goal Four, we've calculated a disaggregated cost per pupil. The calculation begins with our standard WABE cost per pupil, which is shown in the bar on the left, that $13,718. Then on the right side of the chart, the four bars disaggregate that cost per pupil. This disaggregated view is supplemental to the information that's currently being provided in our budget documents. The general education bar is FCPS's cost per pupil excluding the cost for needs-based staffing, English for speakers of other languages, and special education. Then on the three bars remaining to the right, we've shown each of those disaggregated costs individually on top of the general cost per pupil. For example, needs-based staffing adds $1,032 per student to the general education cost; English for speakers of other languages adds, on average, $3,307; and special education adds $11,498, and a student may be in more than one of those categories. The second metric is a measure of the gap between true needs and available resources. With the ongoing gap between basic expenditures and our available resources, and with a focus that we've had on identifying budget reductions, FCPS has not completed a fiscal forecast that captures all of our needs. While additional investments were included in our FY '17 budget, with the significant reductions taken over the last decade, there are many unfunded needs. Looking ahead, in addition to the key priorities that have begun to be funded in 2017, the five-year fiscal forecast will include unfunded needs and key components from the strategic plan. In addition to continuing our investment employee salaries, we know FCPS will also face significant cost for benefits for retirement for 2018. The fiscal forecast will also include program needs, for example, early childhood education and textbook replacement. and textbook replacement. While the use of one-time funding has helped us bridge the gap between available revenue and our expenditures, we will also need to address the structural deficit. The FY '17 budget includes one-time funding of $33.1 million for our budget of beginning balance, and that is an increase of $5.3 million from 2016. So, that structural deficit does remain for FY '18, but the use of one-time funding has reduced significantly since 2013. The third metric is achievement of legislative priorities. Some of the specific achievements from the session particularly is related to the board's adaptive legislative priorities includes a partial restoration of the cost of competing for support and positions, an increase in the cap of the number of students that are state-funded who attend Governor's School, Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, and then, funding for the state's share of a 2% salary increase effective December 1, 2016. Now, that state funding was contingent on the state not needing to reforecast their revenue projections, which did occur this week. The state's revenue came in more than 1% below that targeted revenue level, so they will have to reforecast that. So, at present, that state funding for those salary increases is on hold. We hope that we'll have more information when the Money Committee meets on August 26th, but it's likely that we won't know the status of that until December, when the governor releases his budget. It's key to remember that public education is a shared responsibility between the state and its localities. So, we're very hopeful that the state will find a way to fund the salary increases for teachers for FCPS and the rest of the state. Federal funding does provide a small portion of FCPS's revenue, but the federal government also is underfunding their share, particularly when we look at Individuals with Disabilities Education Act as well as Impact Aid.
So, I will be sharing with you some related activities that we've done regarding this particular strategy area. As you've heard, we've accomplished a lot this past year. This past school year had an unprecedented level of collaboration with the region and the Board of Supervisors, where we championed the needs of our school communities. FCPS participated with 150 other entities in the Urban Crescent Meeting at the University of Mary Washington in Fredericksburg to advocate for additional funding for public education. We've also participated in multiple joint school board and board of supervisors meetings, and additional meetings are also scheduled for this fall to provide updates on projected requirements and resources for FY '18. Our staff also collaborated with county staff on presenting several programs during the county's lines of business review. And then, as part of the advancing several actions and goals outlined in both of our strategic plans, we are partnering with the county to develop an informational dashboard with shared purposes and audiences. As mentioned earlier by Ms. Michael, we've also greatly expanded our efforts in community engagement. These efforts mainly focused on educating and informing the community regarding FCPS's operational and capital needs. We're also have initiated an economic impact study to assist in promoting the value and benefits of the community's investment in FCPS, except I just accidentally clicked the wrong way, so let me take us back. This past year, parent advocacy was instrumental in leading conversations with the state and other governmental entities, and we also actively partner with these groups to ensure that they could be effective in their advocacy. Our effort and support from the parent groups, the community, and the Board of Supervisors culminated into FCPS receiving the largest investment from the community in a decade. So, in conclusion, efficient organizational stewardship is more critical than ever in achieving the academic excellence and strategic initiatives of the division as fiscal challenges persist. As today's presentation shows, the need to demonstrate resource stewardship spans all departments in FCPS. Responsible stewardship must be understood and exhibited at all levels of FCPS in order to generate and preserve the necessary resources for organizational success. In the coming year, our efforts will continue in promoting responsible stewardship with a commitment to accountability, open communication, and transparency. Now, the question slide. But prior to any questions, I do want to take this opportunity to thank the staff for all their work and the work of this goal. And as a reminder, we do have a work session scheduled for Monday, as Dr. Garza mentioned earlier, and we will also be providing an update on the logo and the web development. So, at this time, we'll be happy to take any clarifying questions.
All right. Yes, once again, this is a tremendous amount of information. Thank you. Another great report with really important information, and we will have plenty of time to talk about it, but we can take some time tonight for clarifying questions. So, Ms. Huff?
Thank you. I just had a quick question about the external benchmark of cost-per-pupil. How is it determined as an external benchmark? And is its purpose to -- it looks like its purpose is to show efficiency.
That is correct. The purpose of the cost-per-pupil benchmark is really to show how much we're spending per pupil, and you can use that when you're looking at academic achievement to see how operationally effective we are.
Okay, so effectiveness?
Efficient, I'm sorry.
And that's the reason I bring it up, only because a lot during the budget conversation, we talked about how we spend per pupil now compared to 10 years ago, and also compared to surrounding counties. So, I guess maybe we can clarify a little bit during the work session how the efficiency effectiveness is used for cost-per-pupil versus we need more money to educate our children more, so.
I think the other point that, to add to what you were saying, Ms. Michael, is it's very difficult to compare from one jurisdiction to the other without looking at it per student level. We can talk more about this Monday, because the funding mechanisms are so different from one county to the other. So, it's really the only way that we can compare ourselves from one jurisdiction to the number, to another. For example, when we compare ourselves often to Montgomery County, their funding systems and structures are so varied.
Okay, Mr. Moon?
Look forward to a further discussion on Monday, but meanwhile, this question goes to probably Mr. Plattenberg, that I think I have mentioned this, brought this one up to your attention and superintention a couple of times at least, is our use of trailers or learning cottages, so many of them. I thought that we were going to discuss that sometime, is that it looks like, based upon your presentation, it's not going to be included as a part of Goal Number Four. And do you know when that might just be?
Well, Mr. Moon, it is tied in, although it is ancillary. I know it wasn't presented here this evening, but it is a part of our resource stewardship overall and the overarching umbrella. It is something you have repeatedly mentioned, both in work sessions and that we have been taking a look at. Dr. Garza had requested, for some time, actually, that we continue to remove the number of learning cottages that we have. I know it's challenging to say that when you drove through the parking lot this evening and saw the modular out there that we're going to be putting here, because this facility's going to be overcrowded by approximately 240 students. But we are working in that endeavor to go ahead and reduce and eliminate them. We will be coming back with some more formalized approach and be able to have a further discussion with you at some point as to the progress, not only that we're going to be making. It does tie into the capital improvement program. It does tie into the renovations, and as was reported out, even though it wasn't delineated as the number of trailers, I think you're going to be hearing more about how that, I know you requested, is included as a part of our next reporting out of the capital improvement program.
Okay, thank you. So, that's, you know, definitely before I retire, correct?
Well, I wanted to also add that it was included at your request, Mr. Moon. It was included in the capital improvement plan, planning document, and that was the, that was how we responded to your question partly, is we added it to the CIP. And I will tell you, and I was going to discuss this more on Monday, we struggled with a little bit of what to reflect in Goal Four, because it was so much tied to other work that's going on in Goals One, Two, and Three, or other reports that we've already given to the board. So, we are anxious to get your feedback on this particular goal area, to see what we need to either reflect here, or maybe correlate, or tie back to other reports that have been done. And that's an area, Mr. Moon, that, you know, certainly we can add to this report should we need to do so. But it is in the capital improvement plan, because you brought that up, and it was important for us to include.
Thank you, Dr. Garza.
Sorry, Mrs. Schultz?
So, Mr. Plattenberg, I have a slight build on that, and I know it's going to be a shocking question that I ask, but I was sort of hoping that my, I think I'm on my fifth year now, my fifth year of asking about SAC rooms and restoring SAC rooms to educational use during the day. And at one time, I had done the calculation at 28 students per class and the number of trailers that we have, and the SAC rooms, and I was at 6,125 seats per elementary schools. So, and Dr. Garza, I know this is not something new for you either, but really reserving and whether or not that's used for a meeting during the day, or testing, or overflow, the bottom line is we have some reserved brick-and-mortar classrooms in our elementary schools that are not for classroom use for educational purposes during the day because of our relationship, because SAC is run by the Board of Supervisors. But I can't believe that an agreement between us and the Board of Supervisors can't come to locking up SAC-type properties, or tools, or whatever they need for after-school into some kind of locking rolling, and I've been at NSBA, and I've seen all the vendors, so I know they've got them, into some kind of device that their items and their budgeted, you know, things are preserved for after-school use, and that we can have children out of trailers and into brick-and-mortar classrooms.
That's a good statement. I mean, it's part of exactly, you know, we constantly look for opportunities.
It's been a good statement for five years. It's not in the presentation.
I didn't really know what the question was. I apologize. Yeah, it's been consistent.
Let me remind the board that the metrics that were approved for Goal Four is what was reported on. Now, we added quite a bit, because we felt like we needed more meat to the presentation. And of course, as you know, the team has been doing a lot of work in these areas. So, the SAC rooms were not explicitly.
But it's tied to the trailers.
Oh, I understand. So, if it's something that we need to add to this particular report, such like the trailers, we're very happy to do that.
So, I'll bring it up more on Monday, again. And the other thing is, is I appreciate the disaggregated cost-per-pupil, but I really think, considering, and I'm doing rough math, but I think elementary students are better than 50% of our total student population, right off the top of my head. I think it's about 54% or higher. So, I think potentially disaggregating elementary school, middle school, high school, I mean, I'm not talking down to a school level, but I'm just saying, you know, is it more expensive for us to be educating high school students or elementary students? And then, that could help us as we watch population trends, that if, you know, elementary starts to increase and high school is more expensive, now we start to plan, oh, look, in a decade, when those are, you know, high school students, our costs are going to go up. So, I think that it would be helpful to disaggregate at that level. And then, I'll save my other questions for Monday.
We did include the cost-per-pupil for elementary, middle, high in the full report, so it should be on page 30, but we didn't include it in the disaggregated.
Aha. Well, it's been a busy week, so I just looked at the slides.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. And thank you for all of your hard work on this report. I think it is quite comprehensive, and given the density of everything that you're covering in this report, it's pretty impressive in how you have displayed it in your presentation. One thing that I would assure my colleagues is that a lot of the work that you've done this year in establishing metrics and establishing benchmarks will actually facilitate our planning and our work in future years, because you've now set the benchmark. And that is a best practice in industry, it's a best practice in nonprofits, and it's certainly a best practice in schools that we're establishing. So, bravo. I'm very pleased with that. I do look forward to our conversation on Monday, and especially some of the work that you've done on return on investment models. I think that that is taking it to an interesting, down an interesting discussion path. And, Ms. Schultz, I wanted to just briefly address your question about the SAC rooms, and just, I was going to wait until later on this evening to fill people in on the excellent work that Jeff and Kevin and his team have been doing with the planning folks in the Planning Commission, the Schools Committee, where they have been working with them to get more flexibility in how we, the characteristics and location of schools, and the concept of SAC was pushed real hard, and I can tell you that these guys did get some more flexibility in the SAC language, at which we're going to be sending around a draft, and it will be reviewed by the Planning Commission on the 28th and by the Board of Supervisors on the 20th.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I could add something to those comments. I do want to, moving forward, I think there is going to be some continued heavy lifting in this area. The decision-making framework is going to require a lot of engagement by the board, some of the policy discussions that are part of our plan and part of, you know, we've had these discussions before about the policies we need to have around our finances. The return on investment is a new, something new. I don't know of another school system that's at least attempting to come up with a return on investment model that makes sense. So, we're interested in your feedback to see, you know, because we're really chartering and in really unchartered territory in that area as well. And then, of course, the benchmarking. Benchmarking, you all have talked about quite a bit, but I think in our future plans, we need to be a little bit more specific about the areas you wish for us to benchmark, you know, our expenditures too. We took some liberties on this one, because we didn't have that clear definition, but I think in the coming years, you can give us some better ideas about what you want us to benchmark around. So, we're anxious to get some feedback from you all in those areas.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the very excellent and detailed report. I just wanted to raise one issue, which I don't really expect an answer on this tonight, but I would like to discuss it at our work session on Monday. Again, this is for Mr. Plattenberg, on the renovation queue and the amount of money that it would take to put us into a 20- to 25-year cycle, which is what we would love to have, but that would need an increase of $87 million annually, which I think is a little bit more than 50% more than what we do now. So, I do know that there's been some conversations at the county level of possibly raising our bonding amount, so I would like to explore what we might be able to do to work with the county to accomplish that. So, I wanted to raise that. I do think that it's critical that we do try to accelerate our renovations. I know you do it with such great efficiency, which is wonderful, but until we can get higher amounts, we are pretty hamstrung. So, I just wanted to raise that issue today.
Okay. Mr. McElve?
So, I did just want to highlight the piece of bad news in there on the state legislative front regarding the teacher salaries. And I think, you know, you look at that list of all that we accomplished in this past year, and I think that's unfortunate that we have to revisit some of that. But, you know, as we see with those teacher salaries, to begin with, those only make up a fraction of what we, the cost to increase our salaries here. And I think it's critical for us to begin that advocacy now with our legislators. I don't think we need to wait until the fall, because those conversations are beginning now.
And we actually have some specific ideas on that that we can discuss on Monday.
Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. Many things I want to comment on have been touched before, but I did want to emphasize again my appreciation for tackling return on investment. It is a new procedure, new territory for education, and I'm glad that we're starting that. Certainly, with education, where every year we have a slightly different grouping of children to work with, our standard of excellence changes over time, student achievement goals change. change, assessments change, and we will be using and looking for better assessments. But at the same time, I know that our community and taxpayers and particularly people in the business community are eager and ask us many questions about return on investment. So, I'm pleased that we're going to go down that road and see if we can develop appropriate metrics and explain this in a way that reflects, in fact, how we are using our hard-earned taxpayer dollars. So, thank you for deciding to take that on.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you all very much, and we'll talk some more on Monday. Okay, item 4.01. We're into our action items, and our first action item is the annual School Board organizational arrangements. And in just a moment, I will turn the gavel over to Dr. Garza, but I just wanted to say a few words, this being my last couple of moments as Chair of the Board for a year. I have enjoyed it very much. When I started teaching, I realized pretty quickly that I always want to surround myself with educators because they're people who are dedicated, who care about what they do no matter how hard the work is. They still, there's still joy and there's still so much worth and value in what they do, and they know that. And so, I feel like that has been probably the greatest gift of the last year is being able to spend as much time as I have with staff. The leadership of the school system is just amazing. We have the most, just the best professional staff I can imagine anywhere. I just feel like, just like in the classroom, you know, our central office staff, people come with their A-game and they do their best job, and we really have the best folks in the country. And it's been a wonderful education for me and a wonderful opportunity to spend time with all of you. You've been tremendously supportive of me. I have learned a lot. I want to thank also, of course, the clerks, the School Board Office staff, people I relied on tremendously for everything, right? I come here right before the meeting and my script is written for me and all the questions have been answered, and we go into chairs meeting and you've got all the work done. It's just, I'm totally spoiled. I don't know if I can go back to regular life after this, but I also do want to thank my School Board colleagues for your patience over the last year and for all of your advice, some of it solicited. Some, some not, but that's all right. It's all been good. We have a great school system here, and it has been a great opportunity and privilege for me to serve in this capacity. And I look forward now to getting back to spending more time in my district, in my schools in the Hunter Mill District. So, at this point, I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Pat. I know at some point, we're going to have an opportunity probably to essentially roast you or something, right? I guess is the way it may be feel to you, but you've done an excellent job in your role and just want you to know how much I personally appreciate you. And I know that all of these folks over here appreciate the time and energy and commitment and your complete dedication to this work. So, at this time, I will open the floor to nominations for Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Dr. Garza. It is my pleasure to nominate Sandy Evans to become the Chairman of the Fairfax County School Board for FI 2017.
Second. Okay, there's a nomination and a second for Ms. Sandy Evans to be Chair of the School Board. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, the motion before the Board is to elect Sandy Evans as the Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. I'll call on those members who made the motion, nomination, and allow them to comment first. Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Dr. Garza. Before I talk about Ms. Evans, I want to first, you know, publicly express my gratitude to soon-to-be formal Chair, Ms. Hines. I have served in that capacity for a number of times, so I know how hard you need to work, try to please all the other 11 Board members, which is not always easy. You've done such a marvelous job, and I, as a one-Board member, want to really extend my true appreciation and gratitude to you for your service. Thank you, Ms. Hines. With that, I look forward to having Ms. Evans as the next Chair. Ms. Evans has been representing the Mason District since March 2010. It has been six years, more than six years. During the last six years, she has served in various leadership positions such as Chairman of Budget, Governance, and Comprehensive Planning Development Committees. She also served as Co-Chair of a Joint Infrastructure Financing Committee, Board of Supervisors, and the School Board. Ms. Evans serves as the School Board's liaison to Career and Technical Education, School Health, Family and Early Childhood Education Program, that's a FISAP, Heston Advisory Committees, and also Facilities Planning Advisory Council. This past year, of course, she served as the Vice Chairman of the School Board and worked so well to lead this Board with the Chairman Hines. While a fearless advocate for the physical and mental well-being of our students and underprivileged population in our district, she never forgets her role as a Board Member to serve all students in all districts. As a former reporter and step writer for The Washington Post, Ms. Evans is especially keen about measuring the temperature of a community and reflecting community input in her deliberate decision-making process. She's a good listener, fair-minded, and able to forge consensus among the Board Members with a differing point of view. She's willing to make compromises when needed, but at the same time, she knows when to stand firm on her principles. She's a hard worker, reads everything, does extra homework, and is extremely well-organized. I have first knowledge of Ms. Evans' organization skills. When I succeeded her as the Chairman of a Governance Committee this past year, she handed me two very thick three-ring binders containing all the committee discussion materials as well as extensive notes from her tenure as a Chairman. I have never seen any committee chair do that. Prior to joining the School Board, she was a parent advocate and a community leader. She had served on the School Board's Transportation Task Force and as the Legislation Committee Chairman of Fairfax County Council of PTAs. She was the PTA President at Sleepy Hollow Elementary School, where one of her two daughters attended. I ask all of my colleagues to join me to support Ms. Evans to become the next Chairman of the School Board.
Ms. Hines?
Thank you. It is a great honor to second this nomination. Sandy has been a tremendous partner for me this year as Vice Chair. We work very closely together, and Sandy has kept me organized. As the reporter in Sandy, Ms. Evans, I should say Ms. Evans, be more formal, the reporter in Ms. Evans makes sure that her notes are always better than mine, and she reminds me of what we need to be doing and need to be talking about. I just think that I've also benefited so much from Ms. Evans' positive and resilient approach to everything we do because sometimes it can be challenging, the work can definitely be challenging, and staying positive and getting back up the next day and doing it again is really, is a great model. It's been a great model for me and I think will serve us all well. I also, I think that probably the most important thing about Ms. Evans that I have noticed in my whole time on the Board is her commitment to communication and engagement. I always know that if Ms. Evans is bringing something to the Board or to the community, it will be fully vetted, that when it gets to decision time, we will know that everyone who had any interest in it at all has been engaged by Ms. Evans, and she's had a chance to hear their questions and their concerns and to reflect as much as possible what they would like to see. And that's tremendous. And I think it's particularly important for the Chair of the Board. I really think Ms. Evans sets a model and an example for all of us when it comes to that. And it, being Chair, requires a great deal of communication, and I have counted on Ms. Evans to help me communicate. We, you know, we split up calls to make sure that we're trying to touch base with every Board Member when we have to make decisions. So, again, this is, I'm very, very glad that Ms. Evans will be staying on in the Chairman's role in this very important work. The school system will definitely benefit from her thoughtful stewardship and her just very thoughtful voice on behalf of the school system.
Ms. McLaughlin?
As many know, Ms. Evans and I began our friendship and collaboration together in co-founding the Fairfax Education Coalition. We're both advocates, and she then ran for and joined the Board two years before I did and has been a wonderful example in her six years of service on how truly to engage and work with all 11 of her colleagues. And in the time that we have served together on the Board, we don't always share the same perspective, but I have deeply appreciated that without question Sandy always brings that dedicated viewpoint, that good intentions are there and the respect of the passion that comes from whether it's my voice or anyone else's. We have joked that, Dr. Garza, it's not easy herding 12 cats and 12 personalities, and Sandy, you carry that same skill and gift. And I am so very excited, after all these years of service on the Board, that we here tonight are going to honor your modeling for us after six straight years of how to assume best intentions in all of your colleagues. And serving as Chair, you'll continue to help model that for us and inspire us, and I really look forward to your leadership.
Any other comments? Mr. McLaughlin?
So, like my colleagues, I'm very proud to support Ms. Evans for this position. For those of you who don't know, Ms. Evans has the heart of an advocate, but the soul of a seasoned School Board Member. And I think, as others have mentioned, she has achieved so much on this Board as a result of her engagement with others and her ability to listen, and so I know all of us truly value that. And I think the last thing I'd use to describe Ms. Evans is that she's a fighter, as all of us have observed over the past several months on some other issues. But I think all of us are so glad to see you fighting for our school system in this new role. So, best of luck.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I am very happy to support Ms. Evans' role as the Chair in my short time on the School Board, but having known Ms. Evans from prior to being on the School Board as an advocate, it's the attention to detail and the commitment to community engagement and engagement with your colleagues as well as, you know, transparency and willingness to build a consensus, not always. One of the hardest things about being on a Board of any kind is that it's not a winner-take-all. It is one where we have to collaborate and build consensus, and I watch how you've been doing that over the past six months. It's very impressive, and so I'm happy to support you.
Ms. Strauss?
I am happy to support Ms. Evans for Chair. I admire your energy, institutiveness in later high school star times. That was a long struggle, and you never gave up, and we finally got across that finish line. So, congratulations and thank you, and it probably would not have happened if it weren't for you. You also have cared deeply about the health and well-being of our young people and have been an outstanding advocate and have pushed us further down that road, which then we all know that our students are only ready to learn in school if they are all so healthy, feeling safe, and are prepared to learn. You are also an advocate for parent communication and parent rights, and were also an important voice as we worked through our changes with student rights and responsibilities. So, a lot of the areas in which you were a strong advocate, you were a strong School Board Member and helped us to make the changes that I think benefit all of our children. So, I admire your advocacy and also the fact that you come as an investigative reporter. That's an interesting skill that none of us have. So, you really do look at all sides of an issue, and you're a good writer as well. So, thank you. I look forward to your tenure this year, and although I have to warn you, you know, it is a tough job, and I think Ms. Hines is probably happy with a sigh of relief to hand it to somebody else. I've been in your position, but thank you for being willing to take this on, and I do support you. Thanks.
Ms. Palczek?
Ms. Evans, my neighbor, just wanted to say that I've learned so much from you in the past six months, and I look forward to learning more. You are always act with full integrity, kindness, thoughtfulness, and as I said before, you are a very good listener to all of your colleagues and do spend many hours both being organized but ensuring that you've had a chance to take in many times everyone's input, the community input, and to ensure that every step and decision you make and we make is well-thought-out and the best possible conclusion. So, thank you, and I look forward to supporting you.
If there are no further comments, then Ms. Schultz?
Sorry, I was just waiting until she was finished. So, as a Board moves forward and we're, even though a bunch of us were on the previous Board, this is a new Board in terms of newly formed as of January, and each Board takes on its own character. And my hope is that the character of this Board will be substantially and ever improving on quality control with how we do the Board's work, how we work together, and how we respect one another. And what I've found is, is though I'm often on the other side of an issue with Ms. Evans of some things of import, not many things, that the tone of respect that we have for one another is significant and it matters. We handle difficult things on this Board, and the work that we do together as individuals reflects how well the work of the Board is reflected into the community. And the better that we can collaborate and work together as individuals, I think the better the work product is since we are handling the public school system, which is your system with your money for your benefit. And I am very comfortable with working with Ms. Evans and very grateful for her effort to be that collaborative person across the aisle, on the phone, on difficult issues, and unafraid to talk to one another even on significant matters. So, I'm happy to support her.
Okay. If there are no other comments, then we'll proceed with the vote, which requires a majority of votes from those School Board Members present and voting. The motion before the Board is that Sandy Evans be elected Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. All those in favor of this motion, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. The vote is unanimous, and at this time, I am pleased to introduce the new Chair of the Fairfax County School Board, Ms. Sandy Evans.
Thank you all so very much. And I'm a little overwhelmed at all the kind words, but I will just make some brief remarks. I am truly honored to be elected as your Chair for this coming year, and I want to start by thanking Ms. Hines for her tremendous leadership as Chair as well as for seconding my support, supporting me tonight. It's been a real pleasure working with you this year, and I have very much appreciated her generosity and her collaborative spirit as Chair. Pat has managed to be both thoughtful and decisive at the same time in that role, and we all owe her gratitude for a job well-done. So, I'd like to thank you again and ask for a round of applause for a wonderful outgoing Chair. Thank you for your wonderful work. And thank you, Mr. Moon, for your kind words. I know I will I know I will continue to look to you for wisdom and guidance in this role, which I know you have served in this role several times yourself, and to all of my colleagues. I do want you to know that I have tremendous respect and regard for everyone on this board. We have a board of very smart, hard-working, dedicated individuals who believe deeply in the mission of our school system and the children we serve. We are still a new board, as Mrs. Schultz just mentioned, with only six months behind us, but we know we can accomplish a great deal together. I promise to do my level best to keep us organized, to listen well, to help us all communicate with one another, and to work collaboratively with all board members, and of course, our wonderful superintendent and her amazing team in this coming year. I want to thank you for your confidence and for your support, and I will try very hard to earn it. So I'm looking forward to working with each and every one of you this year. And with that, oh, I get the gavel, don't I? Okay. Thank you so much, and it's right here next to me. Thank you. And now we move to... At this time, I will open the floor to nominations for Vice Chair of the school board. I call on Ms. Palchuk.
I nominate Janie Strauss for Vice Chair of the school board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Hines. Janie Strauss has been nominated for Vice Chair. Are there other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, the motion before the board is to elect Janie Strauss as Vice Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. I'll call on those members who nominated Mrs. Strauss for comments first. Ms. Palchuk?
Thank you. I apologize, I am less prepared than Mr. Moon was, but I do wholeheartedly endorse Ms. Strauss. She has served on our board for 23 years, and I have her signature on my TJ diploma. So very honored to do this. Beyond her many years of service and having been Chair, Vice Chair before, this year she has taken on two very challenging committee appointments. She very successfully got us through a very rough year of our budget, did an excellent job of working together with two boards, with the community, with our superintendent, with our finance staff, and the whole team, and so I think she should be commended for the very hard work that took this year. In addition, she was also Chair of the Audit Committee at a time when we've transitioned to a new auditor, a new plan, and has done an excellent job with that as well. Ms. Strauss is thoughtful, respectful, very well-versed in pedagogy and in board procedures, not to mention her work with the Cappies and being an excellent emcee for that ceremony. She is always dedicated to the well-being of our students, whether we are talking about discipline cases or board policy. I know that her heart fully, truly committed to our schools, to our children, to our families, and to the future of FCPS. So I would like to full-heartedly endorse Ms. Strauss to be Vice Chair.
Thank you. And Ms. Hines?
Yes, thank you. This is such a pleasure and an honor. Mrs. Strauss, for those who don't know, has, yes, has been on this board for a long time, and I have found, since my time on the board, that she uses that vast experience with the school board to kind of keep us grounded in reality, because, and I wonder sometimes, I imagine that every time a new crop of school board members come along, the patience that it must take to watch us learn what you already know. So as I look back, I think, boy, Janie must have been pretty frustrated with me over, but never, you never showed it, always patient and kind and helpful, always. And I think there's just been so many times when I have come to rely on and really appreciate that calm, we've been here before, we'll get through it, there's just a real positivity and a resilience there. But also, I see in Ms. Strauss a real openness to change and to new ideas, and I think that's, I've found even, you know, after four and a half years, it's easy, if you don't try, to avoid it, to get kind of calcified and to think you've made up your mind and there's nothing new, and that's a danger, and I see that you're not doing that, that you're making sure that you keep an open mind and that you're a lifelong learner, and we need that on this board. So I think also the connections that you have built over the years with leadership in the county, I think is very helpful to us as well, and just your own vast experience of every possible leadership position on this board, from Chair, Vice Chair, Chair of Committees. I just feel like Mrs. Strauss is the one who's always willing to say yes to whatever needs to get done, and as a result, she has tremendous experience to bring to this job. So I think we're very fortunate to have you serve as Vice Chair for the next year.
Mrs. Schultz?
Sadly, I am unfortunately not going to be able to support this nomination, even though we only have one, and 48 hours ago, we had two candidates for Vice Chair. Neither one of those is Ms. Strauss. And the fact that this is being offered as an alternative to two candidates that had a lot of support, and that we somehow wind up with a third candidate just because we couldn't come to an agreement or we couldn't have a discussion here about the value and the merits of the other two candidates, is another situation where this has occurred in the past, and I find it incredibly distressing that we're put in a position that frankly, you know, if you say anything, it's not going to be good, and if you say nothing, you're not, you have no integrity. And I already probably don't have, you know, the goodwill of some of my colleagues because I do tend to speak my mind, but I'm not here for me, I'm here for you. And I don't think this is the best choice for this board. I think one of two other candidates who had a lot of support and who had, as I alluded to earlier, an ability to move this board forward as a new board, you know, I have great respect for the fact that Ms. Strauss has two and a half decades of service on this board, but she's coming off being the Chair of both budget and audit at the same time. She's recently been on the last board in positions of leadership, and I don't think that it's helpful, given that background, that you unite a board that is, I think, that we all have a desire to unite and handle the next three and a half years with a new vision, with a collaborative vision, with a collegial vision, that returning to what is a tactic that we've seen in the past, which is if you don't get what you want, you just substitute somebody at the last minute as an alternate candidate. And I think that's unfair to put us in a position of having to vote this way, and I don't necessarily think that that yields the best leadership and the strongest board to do the work on behalf of the public.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I first want to say to my colleagues that I very much appreciate the efforts that Ms. Strauss took to reach out to all of us within the last few days, and I also very much appreciate her willingness to step forward in a difficult situation where we had two very favorable candidates, and there was a sense that we couldn't get to a majority on this. But I wanted to share with all of you what I did share with Ms. Strauss, which is that my decision to abstain on the Vice Chair vote is not a reflection on her candidacy at all. It's my disappointment with the fact that, having served on the last term, we're twice in those four years in which we were electing leadership, we were given surprise candidates within days of the vote, and it was so distressing that, as someone who served these past few years on governance, we worked really hard to create new governance guidelines for all 12 of us that specifically said that anyone who's interested in Chair and Vice Chair should begin consulting with their other colleagues in early June to assess their support, and then to notify the other 11 school board members of their interest in this candidacy in a timely manner, but no later than a week before the vote. And that's important. You know, those strategic governance guidelines were to enable all of us to have meaningful conversation with one another about how best to lead the board. And so I do share Ms. Schultz's concern that in a true democracy and in a board that I would think we would do well to model that, we would benefit actually from having two candidates and have the 12 of us each demonstrate where our support was. I'm actually uncomfortable that we find ourselves now where you've got one candidate, and it's not fair to that one candidate, that you either are having someone voting for you or they're voting against you, because I don't think any of us wants to vote against one another. I think we might have different viewpoints on who might be a stronger candidate, and we really prevented ourselves from being able to do this tonight. And so for someone who has spoken for years about how we need to move forward with better practices as a board, who works so hard on these guidelines, I just feel that my vote tonight in this Vice Chair election needs to represent that I believe we didn't do our best work tonight. And to the two candidates who had sought out our support for Vice Chair, I just want to say to both of you, I greatly respect and appreciate you both. I appreciate the work you put in to speak to all of us and to convey your interest. It takes a lot of, not just courage, but it takes a lot of commitment and dedication to want to serve us and serve this board as a whole. And I will close by saying that I very much look forward to supporting both Ms. Evans and Ms. Strauss in their leadership. I look forward to watching the two of them help bring this board together in the next year, that we really recommit ourselves to equity and fairness for all 12 of us on the board. Every single one of us cares deeply about this school system. We care deeply about our community, and I think we need to do our very best to model that with one another, and I think we have that ability to do so in the coming year. So, thank you.
So I will say just briefly before, oh, Mr. McAlveen?
So like others before me have said, I think there is no one more qualified on this board to hold the position of Vice Chair or Chair than Ms. Strauss, and she has had 23 years of distinguished service on the board and probably held every position at least three times. And, you know, we say 23 years, but Ms. Strauss has been an advocate in this community for far more than that. I'm sure she's devoted decades of her life, life to this county, and even before this county, she's devoted her life to children. So I think all of us are very happy to be able to work with Ms. Strauss in this position. She's been a role model to many of us, and she's brought many important things to this county and some things that all of us very love participating in each year. And as Ms. Hines said, probably the best thing that you bring to this position is your historical perspective. So many boards don't have that benefit. You know, they turn over and then they don't have the benefit of hearing what's happened before and why things are the way they are. So I look forward to working with you in this position.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
So, six months in, those of us that are new on the board and those of us that have returned to the board after one term, two terms, five terms, we all have the opportunity of reinventing ourselves and moving forward in support of a way of doing things in a concerted effort to make the caring culture of Fairfax County a reality. And tonight is the beginning of a process to do that again, because, you know, to a certain extent, it's really tough in January when we've got a swearing-in process, and you have new people and you have older people, and trying to adjust the tempo of a board, which is kind of like a family. And as a member of a very large clan, I know that we tend to say we can put the fun in dysfunction, and sometimes boards, you know, that's, we want to try to avoid dysfunction and move together forward in creating a board that models for our kids what we want them to learn out of our system, and that model is respect and listening and collaboration, communications, consensus. And so tonight, I'm optimistic that we will support both Janie and Sandy in doing that going forward, and also look forward to next week's retreat where we can roll up our shirt sleeves and be the portrait of a graduate of Fairfax County Schools in how we do our board work. And so, Janie, I will be voting for you.
Ms. Huff?
So I've spoken to everyone, but I will be abstaining on this as well, and it's more of a commentation on, or commentary on process. I think that six months on this board, one of the challenges and one of the areas of growth I definitely see that we have is on process, process for the public, process for each other, and to not go about a process only when it's convenient, but to follow a due process because that's how a good board governs. So for that reason, I will be abstaining. The history's already been shared on how we came to the Vice Chairman nomination tonight, so I won't review that, but I will be abstaining.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So good to call you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to support Mrs. Strauss to become the Vice Chair for the next year. I'm not only happy, but I appreciate that you're stepping in or stepping up at this time. Each one of us, 12 of us, have a right to support and vote for whoever that particular board member supports to serve either as a Chair or Vice Chair, and each one of us has a right to run for any leadership position he or she desires. And as one of my colleagues mentioned, that there were two candidates conversing with, having conversation with other board members to see whether he or she has enough support to become a Vice Chair, and I absolutely support their right to do that. And also, we also know that in order to be elected as a Chair or Vice Chair, you need to have a majority support of those who are present at the meeting and voting, and those candidates worked hard to get the majority vote, but it looks as if that majority vote, majority support just didn't materialize, and that was when Mrs. Strauss decided to step in, step in and run for Vice Chair. And we mentioned about process, process. So I'm going to, I'm going to read our governance manual, our governance manual, and for the public, and also to refresh memory of my colleagues on the board, what it says exactly. It says, "Election of a Chair, election of a school board Chair and Vice Chair. All school board members will conduct campaigns for leadership positions who will support a candidate with integrity and respect for all school board members. A recommended timeline for candidates for Chair or Vice Chair includes, one..." A recommended timeline for candidates for Chair or Vice Chair includes, one, start consulting with other school board members in early June to assess support. Two, notify the other 11 school board members of interest in being a candidate in a timely manner, but no later, no later than a week before the vote at the first regular business meeting held in July. This may be done by email, phone call, or individual meeting. Now, three, if deciding within a week of the vote to run for Chair or Vice Chair or to accept nomination to one of these positions, notify the other 11 school board members within 24 hours of a decision, preferably by group email. Once Mrs. Strauss made a per- made a decision to run for the position, I believe that she contacted the other 11 board members within 24 hours and she decided to step in when she realized that those, the other two candidates running for Vice Chair, neither of them did have a majority support. Thank you, Mrs. Strauss. I'm very honored and happy to support you.
Ms. McGlocklin.
I appreciate Mr. Moon choosing to read exactly the guidelines that I referenced in my earlier remarks. And I really don't want to belabor this because I think we're all trying to be very respectful again of Ms. Strauss's willingness to step forward at this, this last minute. But it's concerning to me when Mr. Moon says, you know, we all have the ability to nominate and vote for whoever we want to. The difficulty, Mr. Moon, is that if we have candidates that we wanted to nominate, that we spoke to for weeks, that we believed in and supported, and they now don't wish to have their names nominated and given, being able to provide all 12 of us somebody to vote in support of, it creates a difficult process. And I think, yeah, without going into any, any more further belaboring of this, I would hope going forward in the future that we don't create an environment where other colleagues are even concerned about having their names nominated and voted on because it may not demonstrate, you know, a willingness to, you know, follow the majority of the board. I, I, I will reiterate what I said earlier. I think we're better when we have, you know, at least two candidates so that people can just demonstrate to each other and to the public who we believe might best represent us. It doesn't have to be personalized that way. Instead, we created a situation where people are either voting for someone or not. And because it's the third time in five years, it is concerning to some of us. And so I'm, I, I think it's important that we speak to each other about it and I think we help the public understand why some of us will be voting the way we are tonight.
Thank you. Before we vote, I just wanted to say very briefly, I, I think others have outlined all of Mrs. Strauss's many talents and I just wanted to say I'm very pleased to support this nomination. Mrs. Strauss comes to this role, of course, with a lot of experience and kind of the long view, you know, which we always appreciate, the long view that you bring here. I know that Mrs. Strauss will be a great partner as Vice Chair. She will bring an artistic bent to the conversation, which I, I don't particularly have myself, so that's wonderful to have that as an addition. Plus, she's just a very nice person. So I do support this nomination. And with that, I will, are there any other comments? Seeing none, we will proceed with the vote, which requires a majority of votes from those board members present and voting. The motion before the board is that Janie Strauss be elected Vice Chair of the Fairfax County School Board. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye. Aye. McElveen, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, and Palchuk. All those opposed? Schultz. All those abstaining? Huff, Wilson, and McGlocklin. That motion passes. Thank you very much. And with that, I, the motion passes. At this time, I am pleased to introduce the new Vice Chair of the Fairfax County School Board, Janie Strauss.
Thank you very much. Thank you, my fellow board members and colleagues. I look forward to working with each of you to facilitate the work of the board. Ms. Evans and I will work closely together and it is our job to make sure that our work is timely, is transparent, and that everybody has an opportunity to do their best work. I know that it is everyone's goal to make sure that we provide the very best education to all of our children, that we maintain a high-quality school system. That is the expectation of our citizens in Fairfax County as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia. We are fortunate to have many outstanding educators teaching our children every day and we have chosen wisely in asking Dr. Garza to continue as our superintendent. And we are lucky to have strong administrative leadership throughout FCPS to support our teachers and guide our schools. Thank you for this opportunity to serve as your Vice Chair. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Strauss. And with that, we do have another housekeeping item. This, just so you know, this is a fairly long motion. I move that the school board authorize organizational arrangements and appointments as follows. Designate the 2016-17 calendar of regular business meetings, which are typically held on Thursdays. The board's calendar of meeting dates will be based on the school year and will be published in July as detailed in Attachment A of the Agenda Item. Special meetings, board committee work sessions, and other special functions will also be scheduled. Liaisons and committees will be organized to support the board's work. Committees of three board members consider student disciplinary cases in closed meetings, typically on Tuesdays. The board does not customarily meet in August. Two, set the salary of board members at $32,000 per year and that of the board chairman of $34,000 and reimburse all board members for travel expenses in the conduct of official business, including attendance at meetings, at the same rate as employees of the board. Compensate this, three, compensate the student representative for attendance at public meetings not to exceed $50 per day and reimburse for related travel expenses at the same rate as employees of the board. Four, appoint Stephen Lockhart, Deputy Superintendent, to serve as the superintendent's designee to attend any meeting of the school board that the superintendent cannot attend. Five, appoint Eileen Mulberg as clerk of the school board and Ann Benedicto and Beverly Madeha as deputy clerks of the school board, each with a corporate surety bond as required by the Code of Virginia. Six, appoint deputy clerks of the school board for the limited purpose of signing titles to school board vehicles and countersigning payment warrants as detailed in Attachment B of the Agenda Item. Seven, appoint agents and deputy agents of the school board to examine, approve, and order payment of financial obligations of the school board and to appoint dispersments, approve dispersments made from all petty cash funds as detailed in Attachment B of the Agenda Item. Eight, appoint agents and deputy agents of the school board to examine, approve, and order payment only in connection with the Educational Employees Supplementary Retirement System of Fairfax County ERFC as detailed in Attachment B of the Agenda Item. Nine, authorize the chairman and clerk to sign all legal documents for the board other than those requiring the signature of some other officer and authorize the vice chairman to sign in the absence of the chairman and the deputy clerks in the absence of the clerk. Ten, authorize Stephen Lockhart, Deputy Superintendent, and Susan Quinn, Chief Operating Officer, to execute official documents, including those relating to state, federal, and impact aid, requiring the superintendent's signature, and those relating to the Virginia Department of Education reports, documents, requisitions, and other official correspondence in the absence of the Division Superintendent effective through July 2017. Eleven, retain the following outside law firms as assigned and managed by the Office of Division Counsel. The Firm of Huntington and Williams to provide general legal advice and litigation services. The Firm of Blankenship and Keith to provide general and special education advice and litigation services. The Firm of Littler, Mendelson, and to provide workers' compensation services and such other firms as determined to be necessary from time to time. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Moon. Is there discussion? Seeing no discussion, I call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that vote is unanimous. Thank you. And now we go on to Item 4.00, Governance Committee Recommendations. I call on Mr. Moon for the first motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Once again, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve the creation of a Human Resources Advisory Committee.
Is there a second? And by Mr. McElveen. Is there, Mr. Moon, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just briefly. This motion comes out of the board's review and deliberation over the last several months, actually almost six months, on how the board can benefit better from the advices it receives from the various community advisory committees of the board. The purpose of this new committee, Human Resources Advisory Committee, will be to assist the school board to carry out its commitment to invest in FCPS employees, encourage innovation, and celebrate success. The work of the committee, advisory committee, is to be aligned with the Goal Three of the FCPS Strategic Plan, Premier Workforce. The advisory commi- committee will be composed of 30 members appointed by the 12 school board members and the student representative. Opinions should be citizens with the expertise and experience in the field of human, human resources and/or representatives of community organizations related to human resources. FCPS is the third-largest employer in the Commonwealth of Virginia. And about 50, 90% of the school system's operating budget of $2.7 billion goes into paying for 24,000 full-time equivalent employees. I'm excited that with the creation of this new advisory committee, the board can hear the feedback directly from an advisory committee composed of community members on many important issues related to human resources, including compensation, benefits, recruitment, professional development, and growth.
Mr. McElveen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank Mr. Moon for shepherding this and our other recommendation tonight. It has not been easy to get this board to agree to anything that involves institutional change, as always, but these, these are some good starting steps. And of course, our work is not done on this issue. And I think Dr. Garza and, and staff have made a good suggestion to, as much as possible, align our work with our strategic plan. And so this is one step towards that. I might call this streamline and focus round two, which some of us still might deride as hocus pocus round two, but we will, we'll see how it turns out and I'm proud to support this.
Ms. McGlocklin.
Yes, as Mr. McElveen pointed out, fellow member on the Governance Committee, this was an entire exhaustive school board year talking about this and bringing it back to our colleagues and bringing it back to committee and it's, it's been lengthy. But as Mr. Moon pointed out, we are one of the, the third-largest employers in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Almost 90% of our budget goes to compensation and so our workforce is a big component of the school system and therefore the work we do as a board. And as Mr. McElveen noted, we haven't necessarily made some of the more substantive changes, maybe perhaps on the board's side of our own subcommittees, but I think it speaks very well of this board for creating this new advisory committee and demonstrates the school board's commitment to wanting to be as knowledgeable and aware and collaborative with our employees and with Dr. Garza and how we can continue to promote and achieve a premier workforce here in Fairfax County schools. And so I look forward to supporting this tonight.
All right, seeing no other, seeing no other comments, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. And that vote is unanimous. Thank you. I call on Ms. McGlocklin for the next motion.
Thank you, Chairman Evans. I move that the board change the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee from a board advisory committee to a superintendent's advisory committee.
Is there a second? Mrs. Huff? Ms. McGlocklin, did you want to speak to that?
Just briefly, as noted by my colleague, Mr. McElveen, earlier, the board really does recognize that in order to streamline and focus its work, we did an extensive and exhaustive review of our advisory committees. And it, after much conversation from the board, I do believe that this motion before us really will enable the board to, to streamline the work that it does, but also enable the ACE Committee to report directly to Dr. Garza because a lot of this has to do with operational needs and it's therefore appropriate, I believe, for them to advise the superintendent.
Mrs. Huff? Mr. McElveen?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I feel that this one is, is a tougher pill to swallow and the board will recall the, the impassioned pleas that we heard at the, the committee report of ACE last month about the importance of reporting to the board and each year having FaceTime with the board. Because the work of ACE, while perhaps not central to our K-12 work, is an important part of our system. And so I certainly support the members of the committee who, who have been, who have been on the committee for many years and who have valued that direct engagement of the board. And to them, I would say that this move tonight does not mean that we do not value their, their contributions and their, their work to this system. And I do know that staff will continue to, to view their input as, as extremely important. And finally, that this board and individual board members are happy to hear from members of this committee going forward and we do truly value your service and the importance of adult and community education.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Yes. Ryan, I'm glad you referenced the excellent work that has been done by the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee for, frankly, for most of my adult life. And I will not be supporting this motion because I do believe that the advisory committees, for the whole continuum of learning, provide an important role. So, and I think that having the advisory committees report to the school board on specific topics provide an excellent way, means of keeping the school board members informed and up to date on key issues where we don't have staff, so we are dependent on our community members for that. But I do recognize that this is likely to pass, but I felt that all of the excellent work that has been done and will continue to be done by this group needs to be recognized.
Mr. Moon.
I'm not gonna be able to support this motion. You know, several months ago, I was at Plum Lifelong Learning Center and joined a, a probably the most senior delegate in the General Assembly, our delegate, our own delegate candidate from Reston, Fairfax County, who for many, many years served as a director of ACE program for FCPS, you know, celebrating 60 anniversary, 60 years of history of ACE and FCPS. The advisory committee, they passed a resolution asking, asking the school board to continue maintaining directly reporting relationship. And they wanted to, they wanted to speak before the school, at the school board meeting and they tried that at the last school board meeting, tried to sign up, wasn't successful because there were other, you know, other members in the community who were, who got up a little early and signed up at 6 o'clock in the morning on Monday and slots were all filled up. And- And once again, for this meeting as well, on Monday morning, they tried to do that again. But all the available slots were filled up. Less than five minutes, including five videos. So, they were not able to sign up, to speak. It's so unfortunate that, that in the severing, basically, this long relationship, direct reporting relationship between this Board and this advisory committee may be done even without giving them an opportunity to directly talk to us because simply they were unable to sign up. But I hope, I hope that all the Board members, you have all read, all read, you know, what they sent to us by email. But public, public didn't get a chance to, chance to, chance to hear that. So, I'm going to read some part of that. Some part of that, right there. I'm not going to read all this single-spaced, thirty-page-long, their impassioned plea to us. But they point out that, they point out that ACE Advisory Committee is the only advisory committee representing and advocating for adults who receive services from FCPS and Fairfax County through adult ESOL and adult high school programs. We, they are serving more than twenty thousand, twenty thousand residents in Fairfax County each and every year. Twenty thousand who support the school system, many of whom are parents of our own students trying to learn English so that they can help their children better in school system. Now, we are trying to cut off the direct communication relationship with this particular advisory committee who represent this group of community members. This ACE program has many different, it's not just basket weaving. It's not just the culinary arts. It's not what we're thinking of. It provides a certification and licensure program for the people to be able to learn their job skills, to grow professionally. Career exploration, learning English for the adult, as I just mentioned, or even other world languages as well. Also provides K through twelve enrichment classes for the K through twelve, our students as well. Also provide test prep classes, various different test prep, including SATs. And I know we are trying to be as efficient as possible as a Board, but I am willing to spend, I am willing to continue spending my extra two, three, four hours to meet with this group of very dedicated individual, you know, one of whom from Mount Vernon District has served for more than thirty years on the committee. We don't pay them, but they are willing to continue serving, not for just their own selfish interest, it's for others, for our entire community. I just cannot support this motion.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Moon, for that long history. I also will not support this motion. I actually served on this committee thirty years ago. Adult Ed has come through many iterations, and I encourage them to continue to look for innovative business models. I think that there are some interesting corners that could be turned. But they provide a valuable niche, as Mr. Moon said, in licensure and certification, helping people with job skills. ESOL, this is the organization, the instructional program that provides services to our families and many in our workforce who are learning English. So, I think it is important that we, you know, have a relationship with this program. And, you know, however this motion goes forward, I believe that Adult Ed is an important service in the county. We are here to serve all of our citizens. And under Virginia code, Fairfax County serves more than just K-12 students. So, I am grateful to the services that Adult Ed have provided over the years. Their coordination of classes and our buildings and our tech labs, they do a lot more than I think a lot of people realize. So, thank you to the folks who have worked so hard and are dedicated to our older learners and also to the services that provide our elementary-age children. So, I know everybody's trying very hard to be streamlined and focused. I understand that. But this particular recommendation, I don't support. Thanks.
Ms. Palchek.
Yes. I also cannot support this. Having been an employee of ACE as a flex teacher and having served on the committee, I know that it does serve a special purpose in our community. We can look at revamping, and I know there will be changes to some of our ACE programming. And I do think it's very important and critical for the Board to see this. They also serve members of our community who maybe do not have kids in the school. And so, I think it is important that as a Board, we know how they are served, what the outreach is. If a program is no longer, you know, needed, what can replace it? It includes our driver's education classes behind the wheel that are some of the most popular and I say important, safety components of our county. So, I do, I think that there's an important purpose. Also, I know we've had discussions about our committees and whether, where they will serve and how will we structure them. And I wouldn't feel comfortable changing one committee before we decide what the purpose and the structure will be of all of our committees moving forward. So, I will not support this motion.
Ms. Hines.
Yeah, I'm afraid I can't support this motion either at this point. I don't think we've, we've been working on this for a couple of years, but I still don't think we've finished the work of kind of restructuring our committees. And I think that, you know, reporting directly to the school board, as people have already said, keeps the profile of the ACE Committee at the highest level. And I think that we should honor their voices and their work that way. Our advisory committees, the ones that report to us, report to us as representatives of the community. And I don't think there's any other group, other than ACE, that has more involvement and just more activity out in the community, you know, among people who are not families or students in FCPS, but the larger community. So, I think it's important that we continue to have that engagement with them. It does feel like we're not making much progress on streamlining if we don't support this, but I'm not sure that this is the best place to start.
Mrs. Schultz.
So, my comments earlier tonight about the danger of moving backwards with this Board are, in this motion, being exhibited. The Board had a work session. There was majority support at the work session. And yet, we're hearing about how, for eons, it has been this way, and so, it should continue to be this way going forward. And it's as if it's passing through the dais. And I'm confused because I've heard this described as a niche, where our primary mission is K through twelve education. Just because something moves over to the superintendent doesn't mean it falls off the face of the earth. I mean, my heavens. We defer to the superintendent all the time, as a majority of this Board often does, say, "Well, we have to rely on the superintendent." But we can't rely on the superintendent to keep us informed about adult education, which is not our primary mission? And there's nothing to say. If Mr. Moon is particularly, has an affinity for this, why can't he be the liaison to the Superintendent's Committee on Adult Education? You know, we've just gone through an enormous effort, as a Board, to become strategic, develop a strategic plan, and focus the work of the Board. And yet, here we are clinging on to the need to have a direct committee report to this Board because if somebody doesn't have direct access to us, somehow, we won't know about it. That is a preposterous statement. It is a preposterous notion and that we can't govern in collaboration with the superintendent on something that is not the main mission of this Board merely because somebody is not directly on a committee, directly reporting to us. We can go to any meeting of an adult education superintendent advisory committee that we want to. In fact, all twelve of us could go and sit at that anytime that we wanted to or any part of this Board. And so, the notion that we can't become strategic, even though we passed a strategic plan, that we can't hear from a community unless they have a committee board directly to us. And believe me, there were a lot of people here tonight that would love to have a direct committee to the Board because they feel like they're not being heard. And so, I doubt very seriously, I doubt very seriously that we could not serve the needs of adult education by entrusting the superintendent, whose contract we just extended for four years because we trust her. So, we should be passing this, and it should be frankly pro forma because we already had majority support at a work session. I don't even know why we're using our time now.
Mrs. Huff.
I guess I might be echoing what we just heard because I didn't even speak to the second because I thought we talked about this at the work session. And I know that not everyone agreed at the work session. I do concede that. But my understanding, coming in January, that the Governance Committee's charge was to help align the strategic vision, the committees to the strategic plan, as well as to streamline what we're doing. And tonight, we just added a committee. And we talked at the work session. Well, that's okay that we're adding that committee. We're also going to be taking one away. And now, it doesn't sound like we are. So, I don't know if we need to go back to work session or have another discussion about this or if governance recommendation wasn't approved at work session, why we didn't talk more seriously about that at work session. And I did a sidebar at Dr. Garza because I remember the conversation being that the superintendent did feel like we would still get updates as a Board. We could get as many updates as we wanted to. We could get them regularly. And that she felt like she could do good work with the committee. And I'm concerned that the comments made was that if we are going to change where the committee reports, that we no longer think it's important. And I want it to be clear that that is not the indication. It is still important work. Those citizens should not be disparaged because the direction of where they report has changed. That information's still going to be received. It's still going to be valued. And so, I just want to make that clear. And I will support it as I thought was being advised during the work session.
Ms. McLaughlin.
I appreciate that all twelve of us, and we are missing Ms. Kofax, can always have differences of opinions. But what's concerning to me right now in listening to the conversation of our colleagues is this presentation to each other and the public that if we move ACE's reporting structure from the Board to the superintendent, that we've somehow communicated that we don't value ACE, that it suddenly is no longer going to have the ability to communicate with the Board. Not only is that not true, but as I noted earlier, this was our efforts to direct an advisory committee that has a lot to do with operations and not necessarily policy. And with the input from our superintendent at both the Governance Committee meetings, extensive, extensive conversations, as well as during the work session, our superintendent recognized and supported that this would be beneficial for the Board's work and the work that she does. And I really want to make everyone very mindful of what we're communicating here tonight. We're just now, tonight, just earlier in the vote, agreed to create a Human Resources Committee. So, for all those years, potentially decades, we didn't have an advisory committee to advise us on employees and workforce. What would that communicate to all of our employees that the school board doesn't think we need an advisory committee about one of the most essential components of the operations of this school system? That wasn't what I think this Board was communicating, but we do recognize now that it is an essential part of the work we do, and we should have that committee. Dr. Garza has a Superintendent Teacher's Advisory Council, her ESTAC. It's appropriate. If we decide we also want to have a teacher advisory council to the Board, we can do that. But are we communicating right now to our fourteen thousand-plus teachers, since we don't have an advisory committee on teachers? They don't matter? Because that's what the logic is tonight, that if you don't have an advisory committee to the school board, you don't matter, or you matter less. And I know our teachers matter as more than anyone that we can speak to about the delivery of education directly in the classroom to our students. So, I don't know where, between the work session, where the only reason we're taking up this Board's time tonight and all of the leadership team who's sitting here tonight in this motion is because the Board indicated that a majority of us agreed with the Governance Committee recommendation, which there's four of us on there, and that we would do this. So, to now sit at a board table and hear person after person after person saying that they don't want to support it, I got to tell you, I don't understand where this sudden change in perspective occurred. But I would just ask everyone to be very careful about what we're communicating here. Moving this over to Dr. Garza is in no way demonstrating that we don't value ACE. And every single one of us who looked at how to streamline the work we're doing certainly values and respects the ACE work that gets done. And it's been concerning tonight to see it characterized in that manner.
Mrs. Schultz.
And I may need some help because I hadn't planned on doing this, but I hadn't planned on this discussion happening. So, what I'd like to do is, because one of our colleagues is missing and there seems to be a split on this Board, I would like to make a motion to postpone to a date certain to when our missing colleague is back and bring this back up again.
Is there a second? Ms. McLaughlin. And would you like to speak to your motion, Mr. Schultz?
Yes, I would. Something has happened here tonight that I wasn't anticipating. I mean, I thought this was actually going to be a pro forma. We all agreed to it, or there was a majority support at a work session. And for, and part of the reason that we do that is so that this doesn't happen. So, when we vote on, for example, and it's going to be coming up shortly, some discipline and employee matters, we've had the discussion in closed session, and there is a consensus, and we know what's going to happen, so we know what motion to make because it becomes pro forma. That's what happened. And this is, this is how it devolves if we don't do our homework upfront. And apparently, the homework that we did and turned in and had checked and was in the gradebook got lost. And so, I think it's important for us to return to this table or, you know, whenever, when our colleague returns and maybe Dr. Garza needs some additional time to fill in the colleagues who now seem uncertain about her ability to handle and report to us on adult education. And I'm getting the high ten, the high ten signal from Ms. Mulberg. A date certain would be our next school board meeting, July 28.
Madam Clerk, are you working on language on that? Or are we, oh, you've got it up there. Okay. Are you finished for now, Mrs. Schultz? Shall I go to the second?
I am finished.
All right. Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes. I, just in that, so much time was invested in coming together with this motion. And there's never going to be enough hours in the day and, you know, weeks in the month and months in a year for this Board to have every advisory committee that we would love to have to advise us on the work we do. And the fact that we had the support of our superintendent, that this was a good decision on the part of the Board to do this, and now, there seems to be uncertainty among our colleagues. As Ms. Schultz has pointed out, Ms. Darnett Kofax is missing. And so, we-
She's not missing.
Sorry. She's absent from tonight's meeting. Then I think it, the net, giving two weeks for not only Ms. Kofax to be part of the discussion, but perhaps for- discussion, but perhaps for school board members to, again, talk with one another and Dr. Garza to understand, again, what will be most beneficial to this board and this board's work, I support the motion to postpone.
Is there a discussion? Mr. Moon.
I think we need to just make a decision and then move on, one way or another. It's just to set the record straight. A governance committee did not have a recommendation. There was no consensus from the governance committee on this particular issue. And this was brought to the, a full board work session at the time. This particular portion of the discussion, I managed the discussion at the time, with a quick polling, there was a majority support. There were people, there were board members who were not supporting it, but there was slight majority support of this. What happened between that work session and tonight? Since then, yeah, there was a presentation from advisory committee, ACE advisory committee to the full board. At that time, the representatives from advisory committee made some presentation to the full board. So, that's what happened between that and now. And also, board members have received further communications from the representatives from advisory committee. And that might have changed, might have changed, you know, some board members' position on this issue. But as you remember from the prior governance committee, a motion about human resources advisory committee, my recollection about that from the prior work session is there were board members who were opposed to creating that UHRC, but it was unanimously supported tonight. So, board members are entitled to change their minds. Otherwise, we don't need to have these meetings. We just vote at the work session and go. But the reason that we have these meetings is so that we can have more time to think about the issues and get a feedback from public as well.
Is there more discussion on the motion to postpone the vote? Seeing none, I will call for the vote on the motion is to postpone the vote on item 4.02, item B, the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee, until the school board's regular meeting on July 28th. Did I get that right, Madam Clerk? All those in favor say, raise your hand. Huff, Evans, Wilson, McLaughlin, and Schultz. All those opposed? McElveen, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Hines, Moon, Palchek. That motion fails. We now go back to the main motion, Ms. McLaughlin's motion. Is there further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. And the motion is that the board change the Adult and Community Education Advisory Committee from a board advisory committee to a superintendent advisory committee. All those in favor, raise your hand. Huff, Evans, Wilson, McLaughlin, and Schultz. All those opposed? McElveen, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Hines, Moon, and Palchek. That motion fails. All right. We now go to item 4.03, Appointments to Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee. I call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the school board appoint three individuals to serve on the Family Life Education Curriculum Advisory Committee as detailed in the agenda item.
Do I have a second, Ms. Palchek? Ms. Hines, would you like to speak on it?
Just a little bit to, this is the time of year where we make some new appointments to advisory committees, and I want to thank those who have stepped up to serve the community in this capacity.
Ms. Palchek.
I will just second Ms. Hines' comments. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Seeing none, I will take a vote on this action, this action item. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous with Mrs. Schultz away from the table. Oh, and, and Ms. Huff.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind at this juncture, I'm going to take my leave because of the personal obligation that I mentioned to you all earlier this evening. I'll leave you in very capable hands with all the team that's here tonight. So, I hope you don't mind, I'll sneak away at this, at this time, if that's all right.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Garza. Item 4.04, Local Plan for the Gifted for 2016 to 2021. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for the motion.
I move that the school board approve the 2016-2021 local plan for the education of the gifted.
Second by Ms. Corbett Sanders, Mrs. Corbett, Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Ms. Evans. I did ask that this be moved from consent agenda to the action item, simply because I think it's important for both the board and the public to understand exactly what it is that we're voting on. If this requires a school board vote, since this wasn't presented to the board in an official capacity, then it might be beneficial for just a brief summary. And so, I did contact leadership team members and spoke to Dr. Garza that I would like for just a brief summary to be provided by staff that just explains the purpose of this local plan that we file every five years. So, I'm going to actually turn it over to Dr. Lockard, who can point out which staff wants to help provide this helpful summary about what the plan is and why it requires the board to vote on it.
Dr. Lockard, would you like to speak to that? Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Noel Clemente, our Director of Curriculum, K-12 is here to address the gifted and talented, I'm sorry, the local plan for gifted. Noel?
Good evening. The local plan for the gifted is sort of a compliance activity that we go through every five years. So, we are, all school divisions of Virginia are required to put together a comprehensive plan to demonstrate how we are meeting the different regulations related to gifted education in the state of Virginia. So, it is a comprehensive plan that fully outlines kind of our advanced academic programming. It includes our goals and outcomes for the program, as well as our complete identification process. Our, it articulates our continuum of services and our instructional program, as well as our professional development that we have planned for, for staff. It also speaks to how we involve the community and parents in our AAP program. The advanced, this, the local plan for the gifted that we do every five years, we do work with the Advanced Academic Program Advisory Council to put the plan together and to get input. And that advisory council does include teachers, administrators, parents, and a student representation, as well as staff members from instructional services. The plan that you are looking at tonight has very few changes from our past plan. Some of the changes that are there is we added some additional clarification around the appeal process for parents around level three services. We also incorporated the portrait of a graduate to show how that fits into our advanced academic programming. And we did some slight refinements to our goals in the different areas.
Ms. McLaughlin, are you finished?
Just that, so it's my understanding that in terms of the changes and updates that were mentioned in the posting of this particular action item, you noted that it was primarily just the appeals process for level three services and incorporating the portrait of a graduate.
That is correct.
Okay. So, I do think that this is helpful because it's an over 80-page document and since there wasn't anything redlined, there really wasn't a way for the public or for the board to understand, other than a reference to updates and changes were made. But being able to, I think, highlight them tonight publicly is important. I think it's a program that we know has great value and public trust. And so, given that we needed to be voting on it tonight, I appreciate that we were able to move this to an action item. And I do appreciate, Ms. Clemente, you, you know, giving us the summary.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes. The Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee has reviewed the plan. It is something that they do on an annual basis because it's part of their charge. I would also point to people that if they have time to go through the Advanced Academic's Plan for the Gifted that is submitted, because it does provide a lot of important details and explanation of the continuum of services that we provide here in the county. And recognize, the state recognizes the excellent manner in which Fairfax County provides these services. And it is the gold standard for not only the state, but for elsewhere in the country. And so, I am very happy to support the plan. And I was pleased that this plan has evolved over time to be much more substantive and addressing more details. So, thank you.
Without, I see no hands for discussion, so we'll now take the vote. The vote is on local plan for the gifted. I move that the school board approve the 2016 to 2021 local plan for the education of the gifted. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. Item 4.05, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. This is the portion of the meeting where the board will confirm any action regarding issues that were discussed in the closed meeting. These issues may include action items regarding student disciplinary matters. Board members have discussed each individual case, and at this time, will make several motions to confirm the recommended action. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for a motion.
This is for M.2? Oh, thank you. All right. I move that the annual contracts for the employees identified in closed meeting, I move that the three annual contracts for the employees identified in closed meeting not be renewed for the 2016-2017 school year.
Second, seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. Mrs. Schultz?
No.
Oh. I'm sorry.
I anticipated.
Okay. You're getting just a little ahead of me. I didn't know that you wanted to discuss this. But, all right, all those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. I call on Ms. McLaughlin for another motion.
I move that the annual contract for an employee identified in closed meeting not be renewed for the 2016-2017 school year.
Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. Mr. McElveen, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Wilson, McLaughlin, and Palchek. Those opposed? Those abstaining? Moon and Schultz. That passes. I now call on Mrs. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed illegal drugs and drug paraphernalia at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second? Second by Mrs. Palchek? Thank you. All those in favor, raise your hand. McElveen, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, and Palchek. Wilson, McLaughlin, and Schultz. Those abstaining? Huff. That motion passes. I call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed illegal drugs and a controlled substance at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
I second the motion. Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor, raise your hands. McElveen, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, Wilson, McLaughlin?
I'm sorry.
Oh, Schultz?
I'm confused.
Okay, Schultz, that passes unanimously. All right. I call on Mrs. Strauss for another motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used illegal drugs at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hands. McElveen, Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Evans, Hines, Moon, and Palchek. Those opposed? Wilson, McLaughlin, and Schultz. Abstentions? No, no abstentions. That motion passes. I call on Mr. Moon for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who possessed and used illegal drugs at school, and who also possessed a weapon at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division.
I second the motion.
Superintendent.
Okay. Seconded by Mrs. Strauss. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. I call on Mrs. Corbett Sanders for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who fought with another student and in the process injured a staff member at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Seconded by Ms. Palchek. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. I call on Ms. Hines for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who improperly touched another student at school, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that is unanimous. That motion passes. I call on Mrs. Strauss for a motion.
Thank you. I move to grant the school reassignment appeal of a student who is charged with a serious crime related to an incident that occurred in the community, and to the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Second?
I think it's overturned, missing a word.
Mrs. Strauss, I believe it was a different motion.
To grant.
I believe.
No, this was to grant.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. And seconded?
I think, Madam Chair, I think if she can read the motion again, she, I think, might have-
Could you reread the motion, Mrs. Strauss? I'm sorry.
Okay, this is the last. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't read the last word right. Thank you. All right, I will read it again. You're right. I missed a word. I move to grant the school reassignment appeal of a student who is charged with a serious crime related to an incident that occurred in the community, and to overturn the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent. Thank you.
Second. That was an important word. Seconded by Mrs. Schultz. All those in favor, raise your hand. Huff, Strauss, Corbett Sanders, Moon, Wilson, McLaughlin, and Schultz. All those opposed? McElveen, Evans, and Hines. That vote, motion, oh, I'm sorry, and Palchek. Thank you.
No, she's abstaining.
Oh, you're abstaining. I beg your pardon. That motion passes. Here we go to the consent agenda, item five. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's Rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. There's only one consent agenda item tonight, as item 5.04, award of contract automatic temperature control system replacement at Bailey's Elementary School, has been removed from the agenda at this time. Fairfax County Public Schools issued an invitation for bid, and two bids were received. Both bids exceed available funds. The only item on consent is 5.01, appoint individuals to serve on committees as detailed in the agenda item. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Seeing, hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda item is approved. Item six, new business. The following are new business item, agenda items. There will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future time. Item 6.01 is a presentation, and I call on Dr. Lockard for the introduction. Item 6.01 is a presentation, and I call on Dr. Lockard for the introduction.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kristin Michael is here, Assistant Superintendent Financial Services for the final, 2016 Final Budget Review. Ms. Michael.
Thank you so much. I'd like to begin my presentation this evening by thanking all of the people that worked so diligently to help us end the fiscal year on a positive note. I appreciate all of the efforts and the great collaboration from our schools and departments at fiscal year end, and I'm absolutely grateful for all of the outstanding work and tremendous efforts from the staff in financial services. Thank you. This is our final budget review for 2016, and it's the first time that we're amending the 2017 budget. The budget for the current year will be updated at each quarterly budget review. The FY '16 results are subject to the annual auditor, audit by the external auditors, and any adjustments from that will be reflected in the mid-year review scheduled in December. Overall, I'm happy to report that all of the funds ended the year with positive balances. I'll review the school operating fund first, and then the other funds. During this presentation and on the agenda item, we're using common terminology with the county that was recommended by the Joint Budget Development Committee. In the school operating fund, we ended the year with an available balance of $32.6 million, which is approximately 1.2% of our third quarter budget. As compared to prior years, this is the lowest available ending balance since fiscal year 2009. I'll review the revenue and expenditure variances in more detail, starting at the top of page 1, Actual Revenue. Sales tax revenue is projected to be $2 million higher than the estimate from the third quarter budget review. The final sales tax payment for FY '16 will not be received until July, until after the fiscal year ends. State aid reflects an increase of $4 million. The final payment from the state is based on the actual March 31st ADM, and that actual ADM was slightly higher than the ADM that was projected by FCPS, and that results in 0.4 million more in basic aid than FCPS had projected. As compared to the FY '16 third quarter budget review, federal revenue reflects a decrease of $9.5 million, and that's due to our unspent multi-year grant awards, primarily IDEA, which will be carried forward to FY '17, combined with impact aid revenue being 0.9 more than projected due to the timing of receipts, and E-rate revenue being 0.9 million lower. Lastly, based on actual receipts, our other categories of revenue, including fees, for example, Monopole and Community Use, exceed projections by $2 million. In total, our revenue is 99.8% of our estimate, resulting in a shortfall of $5 million. Moving on to expenditures on page 2. Excluding unspent multi-year grant awards and after funding our commitments and carryover, expenditures are $28.1 million less than projected. The expenditure variance totals 1.1% of our FY '16 third quarter budget, and it's comprised of salaries, $15.6 million, benefits, $8.6 million, and other, which is primarily materials and supplies, $3.9 million. The variance in salaries and benefits was lower than our previous years, and as we work each year to review our projection methodology, this represents just over two days of payroll. As we do each year, based on our most recent experience, that'll be incorporated into our planning as we build the fiscal forecast for FY '18. If we compare that performance to past budget reviews, the expenditure variance has decreased from 1.5% in FY '14 to 1.2% in FY '15, and now we're down to 1.1% for FY '16. As we've tightened our salary projections, the compensation variance has decreased from $34.6 million in 2013, all the way down to $24.2 million in FY '16, which again is just over two days of payroll. So when we combine the reduction in expenditures that result from those multi-year federal grants that will be carried forward, our total actual expenditure variance is $37.6 million. So when we combine the revenue and expenditure variances, that leaves us with a total available funding of $32.6 million. So if we move to page 3, we'll review the revisions to our FY '17 budget, starting with revenue. In item A, funding for beginning balance is increased by $78.9 million, and that's due to the impacts of commitment and carryover, as well as our other recommendations, and I'll review those in more detail when we get to the expenditures. Item B reflects the available funding of $22.5 million that we'll recommend is set aside as a beginning balance for FY '18. Item C is that revenue for the multi-year federal grants, which is carried forward. And lastly, item D represents new grant funding of $5,000 for IDEA Champions Together. So in total, the revenue adjustments are $110.9 million. So at the top of page 4, our expenditure adjustments begin. The first two items are the reappropriation for those federal multi-year grant awards and the new IDEA Champions Together grant. Item C includes commitments and carryover. Our outstanding encumbered obligations, those are undelivered ordered, undelivered orders that were legally obligated because we've already ordered them, is $29.3 million. This is 7.3 million lower than last year, and is below the average of both the past five and 10 years. Examples of undelivered orders as of June 30th include some computers for our FCPS ON, as well as some remaining services for the compensation study and the web redesign, both of which projects are nearing their completion. Our multi-year project carryover totals $13.3 million. That's an increase of $9.8 million as compared to last year. That increase is primarily attributable to funding of $7.4 million for the replacement of radios. So we started the project with the county of replacing our bus radios, and since then we've identified a technology that has a potentially lower cost. Now, while the county's been able to install this technology on connector buses, we're working jointly with the county to pursue a legislation change in Virginia, because without that change, in Virginia code, we're not even able to pilot or fully evaluate this lower-cost option. So any potential savings that we could recover if there were a legislative change and we successfully evaluated this product could be recognized at a future quarterly budget review. Other examples of multi-year projects include the upgrade of our human resources and payroll system Lawson, as well as the replacement of our legacy budgeting system. School carryover totals $12.2 million, which is .4 million lower than last year, and our department critical needs totals $5.9 million, which is 1.8 million higher. It's primarily higher due to a carryforward funding request to help fund the expansion of FCPS ON. Examples of other department critical needs carryover are funding for crisis text training, support for our parent resource centers, and funding for the mobile data terminals for new school buses that was mentioned in the Goal Four Report. Providing schools and departments on a limited basis with carryover funding is a best practice. It allows schools to develop and plan for multi-year projects, examples replacing technology, that can't be purchased with a singles-year funding. The best practice eliminates the use-it-or-lose-it approach that often results when there's no opportunity to carry forward funding. Item D is funding for the school board flexibility reserve, which is used to meet any unforeseen circumstances that occur during the next fiscal year. Any unused portion is carried forward to the next year at the year-end review with the board's approval. Moving on to item E. Item E is $2 million for a fuel contingency. If you remember, fuel rates in the FY '17 budget were reduced down to $2 per gallon, and a contingency was recommended to be created to help us address rate fluctuations. That process is similar to the county, who also purchases fuel for FCPS through the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Reducing the fuel rate and funding a contingency will help us deal with any of those mitigations that result from us having a much lower budgeted fuel rate. Item F is $1 million to add positions to the staffing reserve. Should the budgeted positions in the staffing reserve be exhausted, this funding will ensure that we're able to provide support for schools as we work to reduce class size next year and help us address any fluctuations that occur in enrollment. If these positions are not needed, again, this funding would be returned at a quarterly budget review. Item G funds the third year of continuing the development of the languages through content curriculum that was originally funded at the FY '14 Final Budget Review. In addition to that language through content, funding was allocated to provide access and opportunities for students and teachers to develop global competencies through international experiences. Continuing these efforts supports the strategic goal plan for student success. Item H is the world language textbooks. On April 14, 2016, the school board adopted Spanish, French, and German textbooks for levels 1, 2, and 3. In total, funding of $3.8 million will be required, and this agenda is requesting that we set aside funding of $3.1 million, which combined with available funding for textbooks, would allow that funding to be fully purchased without reducing any per pupil allocations to schools. Item I is position authorization for a position for the newly created school support office and a position to support equity and innovation. Both of these positions were funded through resources that are available from the reorganization of functions, from instructional services, special services, and human resources. Following these expenditure adjustments are adjustments that impact transfers to other funds. So on the top of page 6, we have funding that is requested to continue to address our backlog of major maintenance. Beginning in 2014, when we adopted the 2014 budget, we reduced our funding for major maintenance, and the board made a commitment at that time to continue restoring that funding annually at year end. So this recommendation is the fourth consecutive time that we're recommending that year-end funding has been utilized to support major maintenance. Item B is funding of $0.3 million, which is being allocated in accordance with the recommendations from the Infrastructure Financing Committee. The final report of the committee included a recommendation to establish an infrastructure sinking reserve fund as a new budgetary mechanism to help us fund infrastructure replacements and upgrades. Principal funding for the sinking fund was to come from a joint commitment to devote a designated percentage of unspent available funding at year end. The committee suggested ramping up this commitment over three years until finally reaching a level of 20% of the unencumbered carryover balances of both schools and county after those things that were not needed for critical requirements. At that time, both boards agreed that the school board may need additional time to reach this goal, based on the school board's current structural imbalance. So after allocating this funding, FCPS would be maintaining a commitment of 50% of that original goal to get to 20% of our ending balance after our critical requirements. This would be the second year in a row that we've kept that commitment to funding. So in total, these adjustments to expenditures are $88.4 million. That leaves us with available funding of $22.5 million that we're recommending is set aside for the FY '18 beginning balance. That does result in a shortfall of $10.6 million as compared to the beginning balance funding that we have in FY '17. Any savings from bus radio replacements, any additional funding we receive from FEMA as a result of the reimbursement for snow from last winter, or any unneeded positions that were added to the staffing reserve could all help mitigate that gap as we work through FY '17. FCPS's other funds begin on page 8. Overall, all of our other forms, funds performed as projected and ended the year with a positive balance, and I just wanted to highlight a few areas. In our construction fund, FY '17 budget reflects the reappropriation of unspent DoD federal grant funding of $9.4 million for the school expansion at Fort Belvoir. That grant funding is received on a cost reimbursement basis, so as we complete that construction and expend that funding, we'll receive the reimbursement from the federal government. In our Food Nutrition Services Fund, I am absolutely thrilled to report that with all the hard work of Rodney Taylor and the staff at Food Nutrition Services, that they ended this fiscal year with revenue that exceeded their expenditures. That's the first year in recent memory when their revenue exceeded their expenditures, and it's a true accomplishment, and I really thank them for all of their efforts. They increased revenue and reduced expenditures to get to this point, so it really took a lot of hard work and effort, and I'm really thrilled with their performance. In the Health Fund, the Premium Stabilization Reserve ended 2016 with a balance of $35.9 million. That is a decrease of $3.5 million from the current year, so we'll continue to regularly monitor the reserve balance. And then in our trust funds, just as a reminder, as occurs each year, adjustments from final investments occur after the year-end budget, so all of those final investment returns will be recognized at our mid-year budget review. The very last page of our agenda shows a summary of the grant activity for the fiscal year, and we have an upcoming work session on Monday where we'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michael. And as Ms. Michael said, we do have a work session. If people would like to have some clarifying questions now, we can do that. If there are none, we can save them all for Monday. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Huff?
Thank you. One of the questions I wanted to ask, it's not to be answered today, but maybe to have at the work session. Is there a way we can be shown the actual compared to our approved budget for end-of-year final review versus just the variance based on the third quarter review?
We certainly can look at the actuals compared to our approved budget, but because of commitments and carryforward, I'm not sure that's a great comparison, but certainly we could provide the data.
Okay, I think that, I would appreciate that. And then I also wanted to see if we could get some more information at the work session on the flexibility reserve, how we've used it in the past, whatever seems reasonable to you to go back to get a sense of how often we're using it, how much of we're using it, and best practices on how much we should have, and based on whatever information you feel is pertinent.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other comments, thank you so much, Ms. Michael, and we will see you on Monday at the work session. I'm now going to continue with the item 6, New Business, and again, these are new business items, and we're not voting tonight on any of them, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 6.01, Approve the Revenue and Expenditure Adjustments as Detailed in the Agenda Item. The FY '16 Final Budget Review will be discussed at the July 18 work session. 6.02, Approve the FY 2017 Annual Audit Plan as Detailed in the Agenda Item. The FY 2017 Annual Audit Plan will be discussed at the July 18 work session. 6.03, Approve the Strategic Plan Goal Four Resource Stewardship Report as Detailed in the Agenda Item. Goal Four will be discussed at the July 18 work session. 6.04, Accept the Virginia Department of Education Designation of Fairfax County Public Schools as the Governor's Regional School for Science and Technology in Northern Virginia for 2016-17. 6.05, Award a Contract for the West Potomac High School Chemistry Biology Labs Interior Renovation Project to the Lowest Responsive and Responsible bidder, and authorize the Division Superintendent or the Assistant Superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute, deliver, and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 6.06, Approve Policy 1810 Benefits for School Board Members. 6.07, Approve Policy 2202 Eligibility for Enrollment. 6.08, Confirm Committee Liaisons and Assignments as Detailed in the Agenda Item. 6.09, Approve the Changes, the Charges for 2016-17 for the following school board citizen advisory committees: Adult and Community Education, Advanced Academic Programs, Career and Technical Education, Facilities Planning Advisory Council, Family and Early Childhood Education Program Head Start, Human Relations, Minority Student Achievement Oversight, School Health, Students with Disabilities, and Title I District Advisory Council as Detailed in the Agenda Item. 6.10, Point a Voting Delegate and an Alternative Delegate to the Virginia School Boards Association 2016 Annual Conference. 6.11, Create a Jeb Stuart High School Renaming Working Group. Next, Mrs. Huff.
I don't know if that's appropriate at this point, but I did have a question about the new business for the Jeb Stuart renaming working group.
All right.
Would it be okay for me to ask at this time?
Go for it.
Okay. It's something we talked about on the phone. It is about the composition of the working group. I guess I'm not quite clear on what it would be, how it would be decided, and who would be involved in creating that work group.
So, since this is my motion, I'll say that that is not defined by this motion. It describes the type of person that would be on there, students, parents, business leaders, and this would be the superintendent would appoint these individuals with the advice of the school board.
Okay. I'll just express some concerns about not having an objective way of creating the working group, because I do appreciate the effort you put into rewording this because of the concern of the resolution wording, but then also on there being a predetermined outcome of the work group as it was initially stated.
And what I will say, Mrs. Huff, is because we don't really, I did, I know I allowed you to ask a question about it.
Okay.
But we normally don't discuss new business. We don't take a vote, and because the public hasn't been alerted that we were going to have any discussion tonight, I would ask if you could talk with me about this and perhaps have a discussion at a time when we can alert the public that there's going to be one.
Okay.
Would that be appropriate? All right. I appreciate that. Mrs. Schultz?
I just, I want to share with my colleagues, I did not, I have not distributed the language that I provided to you, Ms. Evans, but, you know, based on our conversation, but I have that I provided to you, Ms. Evans, but, you know, based on our conversation, but I have made some suggestions to Ms. Evans about the motion, and, you know, I will continue to talk with her. I think it potentially addresses some of the things that Ms. Huff is indicating, and I just want to be fair to Ms. Evans, should we not be able to maybe work out at least some of those, I will probably be offering an alternate motion. I haven't made that decision yet, but I just wanted to give everybody a heads up.
Well, I appreciate you alerting us to that, Mrs. Schultz. Thank you so much. The next item on the agenda is item seven, Superintendent Matters, and I will call on Dr. Lockhart.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have at least 25 minutes of comments, so please, I'm kidding. Seeing the late time and seeing as Dr. Garza left me no comments to share, I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lockhart. We appreciate succinctness. Item eight is Board Committee Reports, and I call on Mr. Moon for a report on governance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be succinct. On July 11th, Governance Committee met to discuss three items. The first one was revisions to the manual, our governance manual, on citizen participation based upon recent Attorney General's opinion. And the second one was student recognition program. And third one was naming rights and sponsorship policy. All those three items will come to the full board's discussion on Monday. Hopefully, we can get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Item nine is Board Matters, and I call on Ms. Palchuk.
I will also be brief. I didn't get a chance before, so I do want to thank Ms. Heinz for her service. Having come on as a new school board member six months ago, your leadership and mentorship and guidance have been fundamental, so thank you so much. And I do have several late retirements in our principals, so do want to wish them the best, thank them for their service, especially Mr. Yeo of Falls Church High School, and I know we will have, we will miss him, and we will have an excellent process. Our Region Two team will be busy this summer, but they always do a really good job of forming our panels and finding new candidates. So I do want to thank them, and I hope everyone is enjoying their summer and booking their summer, so thank you.
Mrs. Schultz?
Just briefly, I think in the time, and I'm not sure if we're being timely or not, and if I'm not being timely, then don't correct me, I want to congratulate one of our executive principals who's been promoted, who was formerly one of my principals, Mr. Greenfelder, Mark Greenfelder, and congratulate him in his new role in FCPS. I too want to say to the West Springfield community, I know things are trying, but it's also exciting to see a lot of the changes that are going on in, at West Springfield High School, and just ask everybody to be prepared. It's going to be, I see Mr. Plattenberg over there, it's going to be a challenging year this coming year. All the parking is chewed up and trailers, this is a good case of trailers, trailers are being moved into place and additional bathroom facilities outside, all kinds of things. And then to Robinson, I've been over to Robinson several times, having the new roofing work done as they get prepared to have kind of their facility updated a little bit. Otherwise, everybody have a safe and healthy summer.
Ms. McLaughlin.
First, I just wanted to share with my colleagues that I recently had a conversation with a Fairfax County resident who is one of the directors within the EPA, and I'll be sending an email to Dr. Garza and Mr. Plattenberg because the EPA is about to launch their national campaign on Savor Choice program, and it has to do with how they have a federal certification program on cleaning products, and their goal especially is to promote it with respect to cleaning products used in schools. And it's exciting in the sense that this is a way that FCPS, which has continued to commit itself to going green, that just to make sure if we aren't aware of the program, here we are, the 10th largest school system in the United States and in the backyard of the EPA, that, you know, they wanted to make sure we knew they were launching this national campaign between now and mid-September when the school year starts. So he's actually a constituent within Ms. Evans' district, so I was telling her a little bit about the phone call, but it was really wonderful, and this gentleman mentioned that the head of the EPA, Ms. McCarthy, she's also been nationally trying to help with this campaign. So I'll, just as a heads up, I'll be sending that to you guys, and there's some links that you can see to it, but mostly just wanted to be able to give it to Mr. Plattenberg and Dr. Garza to see if they needed a point person within the EPA who's working on this, and it just goes so nicely with what Mr. Plattenberg and our school system is already trying to do with our Go To Green approach. And other than that, I was commenting that this board is going to continue to be quite busy until we head into our August recess, including our upcoming retreat, which will be, I guess, a week from tomorrow. So I just really look forward to as we begin our new year, you know, heading into summer, but really beginning again the new year for our board work, that, you know, we really have an opportunity together to talk about how we further our relationships with one another as we talked about that tonight. And otherwise, I hope everybody just has a wonderful weekend.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman Evans. I actually would like to just bring a little attention to a very sad, tragic matter at Oakton High School that some of you may have already heard about. It involves Connor Golden, a graduate of Oakton High School and active participant in the chorus at Oakton and the music community there with Tiffany Powell. He was traveling with his family to New York City and was in Central Park in kind of an incredible, incredibly strange accident, jumped onto material that was in, on the ground that was explosive in nature, and ended up losing his foot and part of his leg. And I think actually, he's still in the hospital today. He's, they are working to control an infection, I think that's begun, so everyone should please keep Connor and his family in your prayers. And I know that Mrs. Powell has been doing her part to raise awareness of Connor's situation, and I think there's a fund that's been set up to help with the sort of extraordinary medical expenses that his family is having to incur in connection with this event. I would also like to say, I didn't comment on the votes tonight, but I would congratulate both candidates. I look forward to next year, working with both of you in a leadership role, and I do hope that at the retreat, we can all come together and develop a stronger rapport with each other so that as we head into the busy upcoming weeks with meetings and into next year, we can continue with a real positive approach towards Board Matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Moon.
I'm going to yield my time to, immediate pass, Chairman.
Ms. Heinz.
I guess I better say something then, huh? I just, yeah, just a couple of things. Happy summer, everybody. I want to thank the principals in Hunter Mill, who have been very generously giving me their time. I've got an appointment, I think, with everyone, and it's so nice over the summer to be able to catch up with the principals when they have a little time to reflect on last year and to talk about their planning for the coming year, and so I really appreciate that. Just one other announcement, I am chairing the Washington area Boards of Education this year, and the next WABE meeting is next Wednesday in Montgomery County, and I'm excited to say that Fairfax County will be well represented there. We're going to have a presentation on our Sustainability Committee, our Get To Green initiatives, and we will have some students from the C Club from Madison High School, that's the Students Engaged in for Economic Activism, like, oh, I probably have their own advocacy, no, Students for Environmental Advocacy, I know I'd get it. So anyway, looking forward to that.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
I mentioned this briefly earlier, but I will be sharing with all of our, my fellow board members, the recommendations from the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission to provide more flexibility to our folks as we look to renovating and building schools in the future. And I want to thank the collaborative effort, efforts of the Planning Commission and the staff of Mr. Plattenberg, as well as working with you, Sandy, on that effort, because I think that it will give flexibility in the future as we strive for more efficiency in how we approach building. And so you'll see that in your email tomorrow morning, and I also want to thank the collaborative effort with the county again on the original Mount Vernon High School where they did the internal kickoff for the reuse of that building, and it looks like in an interim period of time that the building will provide some opportunity for early childhood education. And so watch that space, but once again, that's a wonderful example of how FCPS and the Board of Supervisors can work together.
Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you. I want to welcome Ms. Chu again to your first meeting, and I hope that you will, that we didn't bore you this evening. Our interesting discussions, but we all look forward to your contribution to our work. We really do value the voice of our students. And thinking back, Mr. Press, who acknowledged the amount of school that he did not attend while he was in your seat, good luck. And it will be a busy year ahead of us, but we welcome you and look forward to working with you, and anything that any of us can do to help you, we stand ready to assist. But we look forward to your strong voice and representation of the rest of your colleagues, so thank you. I also have some bittersweet news. William Bates, our wonderful principal from Herndon High School, has been hired away by Baltimore County Public Schools, and they certainly will be gaining tremendous talent in Mr. Bates. He has served Herndon High School and the entire Herndon community so well. He came to Herndon High School, worked as a teacher, had other leadership positions in that high school. When he took over as the principal, he was so collaborative, one of the outstanding, you know, he had high standards for kids, but for teachers, and they worked so well as a team. So I congratulate Mr. Bates, because I know this will be just an important add in Baltimore County, but I'm sad for the rest of us, but wish him a lot of luck, and I'm not surprised can't keep a good man down. And he is a wonderful, wonderful educator, and on behalf of our entire Herndon community, we're very grateful for the tremendous work and the successes that he brought to Herndon High School. So good luck, William, sad to see you go.
Mrs. Huff.
Pass.
Mr. McElveen.
So I think this has been a rough couple of weeks for the world, for the United States and for Fairfax locally, and tonight unfortunately, we see that there's been another incident in France, and so I think it just reflects on all of us that we need to continue to model good behavior and be kinder to others.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. And I would just also add my voice to welcoming Ms. Chu to the board. I very much appreciated sitting down with you and talking with you about some of your goals, and of course, you've got wonderful goals here with the mental health and equity and workload and balance, so I look forward to working with you, and I'm sure everyone on the board looks forward to that as well. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.